America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming out tonight. We have a number of reports, starting first with the Strategic School Improvement Plan. Dr. Flanagan? We like Dr. Flanagan because she gives us candy.
I'm going to do a very short introduction given the agenda. First, I'd like to recognize our principals, many of whom are here this evening, but their hard work and leadership of the school data teams who are responsible for creating and developing these strategic improvement plans. I do have a couple of board questions, but as we go through this, one of the things I think would be important to remember is that we are discussing two different years' plans. We're doing the 12, 13 end-of-year plan and results, as well as the proposed or the goals for 13 and 14. So sometimes we get all this.
So does that mean that we have to change where we do this monitoring report during the year?
Well, you know what? It could be. Last year, we actually did change it, but we never did the results. So breaking it up might be something that you might want to consider. Sure. So I did get two questions. One was had to do with the variation in the plans and the goals themselves. I consider that a really healthy thing for the district is that we have been doing strategic improvement plans in the district for about 14 years, and we really have gone from one extreme to the other, where at one point, the district actually wrote the goals for the schools. And we actually had a phase where the district came up with the actual percentages for each of the schools. And if you look at the literature and the research, it really is much more beneficial to have the schools take ownership of this. There's a number of reasons that I think, as well as the research would show, is that it increases the ownership and the commitment to the plan when there are people at the school site who are responsible for implementing it actually create it. I think it's also an opportunity, and I think we've seen this in the last few years in the plans themselves, that the there's a greater opportunity for innovation and creativity in developing the strategies that are implemented in those plans when they actually become steeped in the data and really know the students and the staff much better than the district would ever be able to. Also, I think there's evidence that the school personnel are really implying the training that we've given them and the improvement process. And I think that shows in the plans that there is no cookie cutter plan that's going across the district. The plans themselves, I think, are really the varieties of a positive reflection in that they're examining their own student data, that they're identifying possible causes, and that they're researching solutions. The second question I got was the connection between the school improvement plans and the DCEP, the District Strategic Improvement Plan. And I think that the schools, especially in the last few years, have really tried to strike a balance between looking at what the district's strategic improvement plan goals are. In this case, we have three in the district, just to remind everybody. We have the elementary one, it has to do with reading. Secondary one are both at the middle school level and have to do with writing and math. And in this particular case, in 13, 14, all three of the middle schools have aligned their strategic improvement plan with writing and for the DCEP. And at the elementary level, all but two have reading goals. And I think, again, looking at the goals of the schools and as well as the data that they're using to make those determinations, it really is very obvious that they looked at what the priority had to be for that school. In some cases, the school had been working on reading for several years and are turning to math. And in some cases, the reading scores were excellent, and they chose to focus on a different area. So those were the two questions that I got. And I wouldn't also, one proviso I would want to remind everybody about is that the fact that a school may not have an aligned goal with the DCEP doesn't mean that they don't participate in trying to achieve the district improvement goals that we've set. They still do all the professional learning, they're involved in all the curriculum work, so it's not that they're set apart from that work. And then, I guess, if there's any questions, anybody have any questions or comments? Peter?
I guess, Ellen, my first question is about timing. So now that we're not so dependent on the CMT, have we thought about moving up the cycle? Because we're developing these plans, we're submitting them in October, so we've basically already thrown away a month of school. If we needed to do planning, shouldn't we start earlier?
Well, actually, they submit them to us because we actually did change the cycle of the planning, right? What we do now is, in the spring, each of the school data teams takes time to look at the plan that they've been implementing that year. They're not waiting for the results of standardized testing. They're looking at the plan, looking at what needed to be adjusted, and those, especially those results indicators, those dipsticks along the way to tell us whether we're actually going towards success and achieving our goal, and whether our strategies are having some impact on performance. And what they're doing, the school data team and involved with their staff, is really assessing that plan. Did we make the, did first of all, did we implement? That's a very basic compliance level. But also, what kind of impact has the plan had this year? And are we headed to a year where we need to, we put a little bit more than we could chew and we need to extend the plan, so we're going to go into the next year? But I think what's important is that by the time the school year ends, the school leaves knowing very well what the plan is going to be, what at least the focus area is going to be. This year, I was very excited about the change that we made in having the SIP plans reviewed within the networks. I think that was a real step forward for the district, instead of waiting to have feedback on those goals, proposed goals and plans into the first two weeks of October. But this, by doing that and moving that work to the summer, they really do hit the ground running once the school year begins. And it doesn't mean that we don't look at the standardized test. We absolutely do. But as John Curtin has really drummed into all of us, you're looking for a trend, not a one-year anomaly. You're looking back if the scores are where they are, where you want them to be. Is this a one-year thing, or is it, you're looking back at a trend? So should we revise the plan or tweak the plan, or really does it need to be overhauled based on the standardized test results? Agatha?
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, I congratulate you and all the principals. I actually found the SIPs extremely informative, extremely well done. I think the network idea, you guys were able to use it effectively. And to me, it was a mixture of taking into account, each principal took into account the needs of their students, the priorities of their schools, without losing focus on our priorities as a district. So I was personally there, very happy with it. The only concern that I have, and you guys identified as, you know, as a decision, is how do you balance setting goals ambitious enough that you push and you have high expectations over every student, but so ambitious that if I do a cursory look, like some people do, not accomplished, not accomplished, not accomplished? So it isn't until you get really into each SIP that you realize, well, it's not accomplished. One, because they were just barely off, and two, multi-year, or three, this was very ambitious. So that's one thing. And I know you pointed it out, and I don't need an answer now, but that's always a challenge, I think.
And I think it is a challenge. You know, personally, I would rather see people stretching towards a goal than setting goals that are pretty much assured that they're going to reach. The other consideration, I'd say, as a building principal, I face this myself, is that you also don't want to have the staff demoralized in constantly having a, we didn't achieve the goal, we didn't achieve the goal, even though they've put a tremendous amount of time and effort and resources into trying to reach that goal. One of the things we always have to remember is that the work that they've done, you know, maybe measured on this one metric, hasn't achieved the goal, but there certainly has been an increase in the staff professional growth, in the students. You know, sometimes it's not the fact that the strategy didn't work, it's going to take a few more years for that strategy to sink in before you can see the results. So one of the things I would encourage, I see as an encouraging sign, is really trying to look at more multi-year goals, so that we have some time to get to that. And certainly have dips, dips along the way, and certainly be measuring, you know, using the metrics that are available, but also trying to give ourselves some time to get there.
I don't want to add more work, and maybe it's me, being a lawyer, we're not exactly the best at math. But I actually had to go and do the calculations as to what percentage of the goal had you accomplished, to get an idea of where it was. Is that a possible thing to do? And again, you know, I could just take out my calculator.
What percentage of the schools' medicals?
No, 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 no. Within each school, what percentage of the goal did they accomplish?
Oh, okay.
Because it just says not accomplished. And then when I went in and did the math, some of them had a conflict 70%, but others, there were some goals within the same school that only were 20%.
I see what you're saying.
So rather than me do the math, I rather you guys do the math.
So yeah, we can. I'll let the calculator do the math, trust me.
I guess I want to echo Adriana's sentiment about, you know, you don't want the goals too easy, you also don't want them too hard. And I guess I've got two questions. Is there a preference for single-year versus multi-year goals? And if we're thinking about stretch objectives, shouldn't we be thinking about reachable checkpoints along the way? Maybe that's where you go from year one to year three to year five.
And if you're asking me for my preference, I think depending on the goal, I think a multi-year goal gives you a lot more time to really start to gear up and start to have the strategy become embedded within the school community. But I totally understand and can value that there are certain goals that might be something that you want as a one-year goal. I think what we have to do is encourage a trust in the school community that the multi-year goal is something that we will measure, which goes to your second question, that we do have benchmarks along the way. So it's not just like, well, you know, here's what we're going to do in three years, and we'll see you in three years. That there are, you know, accountability signposts along the road. And using, that we have multiple measures within the district, and certainly plenty of metrics to be able to use to do that. So I would say, in answering that question, that multi-year goals certainly for, what I would say is, in the next couple of years, would be something that we should encourage and foster in the district, and that, you know, certainly giving the option and the autonomy that sometimes there is a goal that should be a one-year goal.
Just going along with the theme of multi-year goals, will that enable an easier reporting when we implement new initiatives where there might be crossover, so that they can be tied into a goal as a starting point, and then showing the progression along the way?
You mean a district initiative or a district initiative? It would depend on whether the goal, you know, the strategic improvement plan at the school level is tied to a district initiative or aligned with a district initiative. Certainly, that would be the case for the district improvement goals, to see whether, you know, there's a chance for crossover and of using a, the goals that we set for the district, you know, tied into an initiative, excuse me.
The thought process is just to make it more simple and to have fewer possible.
Right. And the other challenge we always face with the multi-year goal is that if you have schools on different years, so, you know, one starts at one year and another, then you'll always have these, you know, these permutations across the district of who's in year one, who's in year three, who's in, so who's starting a new goal. So, I mean, but I think that's just, you know, a simple fix. We can certainly look at that and discuss it with the principals.
Ellen, is there any mechanism for parental involvement in this SIP planning? And also, once done, is it communicated out to the community regularly?
Well, the planning, we have SIP representatives on all of the, you know, we go through the terminology of SIT, which is the old term, which is School Improvement Team, and SIP, which is Strategic Improvement Plan. So that, one of my goals this year is definitely to clean up that language, and you can see that in the report at the end. We have representatives, usually at least two representatives. Oftentimes, it is the PTA president, which, you know, is not a bad thing or a good thing. I think that's actually a good thing. But the, over the years, when we, this process has evolved, we really have delved much more into the data, getting very specific with students, identifying students as well as staff members. So it would really be inappropriate to have parents involved in that process, that level of detail, because we really do get, that's how drilling down we get now, is to the actual students. And what we do, though, is we have a training for the SIP representatives each year, and we go through the different roles that they play. And one of the strongest roles, well, two of the strongest roles, I'd say, are the monitoring process. They give feedback to the school data team or the SIP team on things such as, gee, you know what, this is going to be perceived by the community as you're focusing on reading, but there really is this concern about math. How do we, how do we address that? Where do we go with that? What information can we share with parents as to why this was chosen and not this? The other role, I think, is that it's important, too, is that of the ambassador and the liaison between the parent community and the school community in saying, okay, if this is our SIP goal, and it's reading, I know we always have a science night as per PTA, and we sponsor that, maybe this year, in addition to a science night, we should have a reading night. How can we really, as parent community, support the school in achieving this goal? How can we get parents, individual parents, more involved in working to support with their own child, as well as the entire school body, in achieving that goal? So I think there's a very important role for parents, and I think that monitoring and that ambassadorship is really important. The training that we do with, that I do at the beginning of the school year with the SIP, I think, makes that clear. And the other piece that we added is, at the end of each school year, we bring all the SIP representatives, parent representatives, together, and they do a sharing on how they supported, what strategies they used to support the achievement of the SIP goal. And that's been very well received and has really cross-pollinated some of those ideas across the district. Anybody, any other comments?
I just have one. Ellen showed me the report and asked me how I would like to simplify it for the board, and I took one look at it and said, I don't know how you simplify 60 pages, but I know the Policy Governance Committee will take a look at it. But also, it's a good opportunity for maybe the principals to think about, is there, I don't know how burdensome this is for you, but maybe there's, they have ideas on how to simplify it or whatever, so we'll, so we'll give you some more work out there, right? But, you know, it's really very helpful, and we're really grateful for all the work that you do. And Adriana said that it's been very helpful to us. I'm just pointing if there's a way that we might want to simplify it, or the principals might find a different, an easier way for them to report it, or, I don't know, maybe Mr. Dunn has a magic bullet in his digital learning bag that we can just do it instantly, right? So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
While Ellen's transitioning, I want to thank the principals who are here, because as Ellen mentioned, there are many authors to this document, and many of them are here. I want to ask them to stand up, because they're all so closely stuck together. And they stood up anyway, that's good.
And the next is the digital learning, Mr. Brannan?
I'll have Phil and Nona join you at the table. Irene and I will stay on the side here. Just very briefly, because Phil and Nona and the whole entire team here has put together a 20-minute presentation to supplement the documentation report you received. But this really is the first major update that the board has received verbally. They received in the fall an update written with the CIP process, and Irene and I gave you a very, very brief update in the end of July, when really the project started kicking off. The main genesis of this presentation tonight is part of the release of conditions when the BET funded this project out of capital, was a formal update to the BET in January. So we want to provide this presentation to the board prior to the BET, and we're scheduled to present to them next week. And this will dovetail nicely into the capital operating review that we, as with BET, in February.
So with a dress rehearsal?
Opening night, opening night. With that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Digital Learning Technology, Phil Dunn, and our Project Manager for Digital Learning, Nona Alman.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Connecting my computer. Well, good evening, thank you for having me. So, my name's Phil Dunn, I hope you know me. I hope I'm myself. Just moving through format for this evening. Just moving through the format for this evening. This will be some parts primer, some parts update, and let's jump into it, Nona. So, in March of 2013, this board reviewed a digital learning plan. And by April of 2013, this board approved a digital learning plan that was structured in a number of ways. It's an initiative that takes three years to its full implementation. It's phased, and each phase corresponds to a school year. In the first phase, our scope is that we're working with two elementary schools, Hamilton Avenue and Riverside, and thank you to Chris and Cynthia for attending. By our second phase, in the 2014-15 school year, we'll be working with additionally the three middle schools, focusing on their sixth grade. And by the third phase, we're in what we call full implementation, where the whole breadth of the model will be put in place, and the whole district will be interacting in a digital learning environment. And in each phase, we like to think of there being three stages. First, we plan, then we prepare, and we implement. But we don't do these things one at a time. So at the same time that we're presently rolling out 800 student personal learning devices, we've chosen the Apple iPad for Phase One, by Digital Learning Day, National Digital Learning Day, on February 5th, we're already looking at the personal learning devices we'll be using for Phase Two next year. The one thing I want to keep in mind, though, is that in each phase, we evaluate. So by the end of Phase One, we will have an evaluation that I'm going to expound upon this evening to review. And then, in each of the subsequent phases, there will be additional evaluation. So we're managing this tightly and looking at every step of the way, what there is to learn for the next phase. There was a vision articulated back in April of 2013. And that vision articulated largely a theory of action, that if we build a personalized digital learning environment as our input, then we'll get two outputs, better academic achievement and better workforce readiness. So keep that theory of action in mind as we go. And moving along, we wanted some outcomes that we spoke to. And those outcomes touched upon improvement for learners, for educators, for every stakeholder in this community. We wanted a rich curriculum, accurate assessments, efficient operations, board transparency, board engagement with the community. And we spoke to pretty much the breadth of the community that we'd like to touch upon and give improvements to. So the way that we've internalized this whole framing is with a framework. And whenever you embark upon any type of change management initiative, you really sit down and think that there are a couple of levers to pull. Your power is always people. It's the people that are in the classroom every day, the students, the parents that support the students when they come home, our administrators, our board, who speaks for the community. And we manage to the people. We support them. And those people then are called upon to look at their processes better, smarter, faster, doing more with less, et cetera, et cetera. And finally, that is all supported by technology. So we have people, process, and technology. And for those of us who came out of consulting, that probably shouldn't look too foreign. But we think that every scope area in this initiative falls somewhere along one of the spectra of people, process, and technology. And we manage each of the scope areas and evaluate them, so that there's that accountability built in. And finally, the hub of that model is the vision that was articulated, the vision that was approved, that aligns with the vision of the graduate, and our educational goals. Those goals were reviewed back in July of 2013. And our educational goals are to make students critical thinkers of online content, they're to make students self-reflective learners. Another goal is to have students receive quality feedback when they're work. And finally, we'd like to personalize learning, such that by the fifth goal, students are prepared to take the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium exams. And not just be prepared for them, but be successful on them. So let's dig in a little bit deeper and talk about what exactly each of these goals means. And then we'll update you on how we're tracking the success. When we think about the present day, before this initiative, let's just zoom in on that. If you walk into a classroom that hasn't undergone a digital learning transformation, you typically see a physical resource, whether it's a textbook, a ditto, or other resource, usually procured from an American publisher, written by an American author. And then the students have a discussion on that, and just by the laws of physics, where they're sitting and what they've read, it's one perspective. But if a student now, today, in today's world, has to access something in Newsweek, or look up a topic in Encyclopedia Britannica, they have to go online. Those publications are out of print. It is inevitable that all information is moving to the online space. So in today's world, we're giving students the tools to succeed. A student now has access to a personal learning device that they can use to access information wherever it lives. So we're making ourselves form-agnostic for the access of information. We can get access to textbooks, we can get access to worksheets, but we can also get access to Newsweek. We can get access to The Telegraph in the UK. That's the importance of the digital learning environment initiative here. Going back to a digital-free thought exercise, you have a classroom where a teacher would typically stand at the front of the room, much like I'm doing now, speaking to everyone, addressing everyone. And if someone has a question or has to say something, they have to really rely upon their own audaciousness and boldness to raise their hand and say, I need help. Because it is quite courageous to say, I don't understand something. And the teacher, if they stop their lesson, addresses the student, offers an answer, and then moves on. And it's up to the student and the creativity of the teacher to find the time to go back and come to some type of conclusion about whether that answer was internalized. So that teacher is the sage on the stage in that model. But in the digital learning model, the teacher becomes the guide on the side and lets the student drive the learning. It puts the student in the driver's seat. So in that same scenario, where a student doesn't understand something, not only do they have the resource of the teacher, their educational guide, but they can drive the learning and access other resources. They can access them at home, they can access them virtually anywhere. And those resources can be internalized independently, working through an online assessment program, or they can be internalized in a small group setting, where students get together in flexible groups and work at different workstations. So again, we're empowering greater flexibility and agility to meet academic need. Most of us know a teacher. Some of us are them. My mom's a teacher, her second career is near and dear to my heart, so this is a slide that really is impactful to me. But if you think about how things are done without digital tools in an educational setting, when it comes to the assessment and evaluation of student work, nightly, a teacher has to lug home a sack of papers from many students, and there's that nightly homework assignment, that weekly quiz, that monthly exam. And the teacher is really called upon to do two things. Sheer, he has to first assess it and say whether any individual problem is right or wrong, and then they have to evaluate it and say why. And that's a lot of work, and our professionals are very great at that. But in a digital world, we want more feedback, we want better feedback, we want faster feedback. So we don't have to wait even as much as a day to get feedback. And using tools like what we've implemented in Schoology, which is an online learning platform that not only warehouses curriculum, among many other functions, but allows us to issue online assessments, we've taken one of the big tasks completely off of the teacher's back, so the teacher can focus on that meaningful feedback piece, which is really where the magic is. The research validates this. Looking at researchers like Rick Stiggin's, in an educational setting, receiving frequent quality feedback really makes the difference between whether a student can own their learning or not. And we define quality feedback as being immediate, descriptive, and frequent. So the nightly homework can become virtually a stock ticker of performance, where the student is guiding their own tasks and getting immediate feedback to whatever they undertake to do. And additionally, that feedback can continue to be verbal, like it is in a classroom, it can continue to be written, but it now can also be a voice thread, that a teacher, almost at any time of day, publishes to a student online. Or that feedback can come from the student themselves, where, to use an example we've seen in physical education, a student may film themselves performing a particular task and go back and watch it. Golf ranges do this in certain places, where they record your swing and you watch it. And then, they have software to analyze it. So, again, we're really opening up the field by integrating technology and allowing more ability to learn anywhere, anytime, and get more, better, faster feedback. Let's go back to that classroom for your digital tools. So, you have everyone sitting in a room. I'm not taking shots at this board meeting, you know? I'm not trying to redesign how we do things here. But everyone's sitting in a room, listening to someone on a stage, and moving toward the same goal. And they're moving at that person's... They're all moving at the same pace effectively as a group. So, again, if someone doesn't understand something, if someone maybe isn't interested in that particular topic at that point because they've internalized it very well and they'd like to look at other things, everyone is moving at that pace. And there's a body of research that says that when someone doesn't understand something and you pile on more things when they didn't understand that first point, they get stuck. In the digital learning environment, we can meet your needs at your pace. And as you see, these roles aren't too pretty, but everyone gets to where they're going and they get to that standard. So, now, with digital tools, when a student is having an issue understanding a piece of material, they can, at that moment, gain access to other resources that promote that understanding. They no longer get stuck, they don't get left behind. If a student's already internalized something very well, they can take a nice little detour through other pieces of the curriculum, when appropriate, of course. And we all get to that destination. We get to that universal, high-quality, standards-based curriculum and those standards within it. All right? And finally, there's the issue of S-Back readiness, and we address that here. I want to go back to that framework for a moment. Any initiative comes down to the people who power it, how they do their work, their processes. And finally, since time immemorial, we support ourselves with technology. The fork was technology at one point. So, that's how we're tackling this. That's how we're preparing students for success. We're helping people, we're looking at processes, and then we're supporting it with technology so that we can realize that vision and our educational goals. These students is critical thinkers of online learning, giving them the right tools. Moving from the sage on the stage to the guide on the side, putting students in the driver's seat of the learning. That quality teacher feedback that's more, better, faster, and that personalized learning. So, how this is all germane to S-Back is that we're first supporting people. We're working with our buildings through, under Irene Parisi's leadership as the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning, making sure that the Common Core State Standards are implemented with fidelity, making sure that there's clear alignment, making sure that there's clear understanding among the workforce. We are making sure that students will have practice taking the assessments, just like they would with paper. With paper, students might have taken a practice test, made sure that they wrote their answers on one paper, carefully diligently transferred them to a bubble sheet. And we practice that with them so that these technical adaptive challenges were no longer bars. We're doing the same thing here, it's the same way. The process hasn't changed. The form has changed, but the process hasn't. And when we look at our other processes, we're doing things like running testing scenarios. We're looking at the logistics of the tests themselves, where if we can have X number of students take the test at any one given moment, we're creating the schedules, largely under CIPOL, creating the schedules that ensure maximum success so that we know who can take which test when. And finally, with technology enabling everything, we're upgrading the infrastructure, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. We are providing the devices for the exams, one of the touchstones of the initiative itself. And we're managing those devices to make sure access is safe and secure. But again, it comes back to the people, the process, that are supported by technology. So, to give you some updates in rapid order for what we've been doing since we brought on a project management capacity beginning in July, since I came here six months ago, beginning in August, we have contracted with a professional learning vendor, gotten professional learning underway beginning November 1st, going back to the people, strengthening them, giving them opportunities to develop their skills. We've implemented a curriculum instructional management system, an online system that warehouses all of our curricular assets, our instructional assets, allows people to basically exist in the digital space. We've completely redefined the process since August 1. And finally, we've installed major, major infrastructural upgrades with an even greater scope scheduled for completion by February 5th to coincide with National Digital Learning Day, which was intended to coincide with the student device rollout. So, people, process, and technology. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Nona Almond to talk us through the evaluation.
Thanks, Phil. This is a very large, complex project impacting every district stakeholder. And it requires eight concurrent work streams, other ones listed along here. So, it requires a lot of work in infrastructure, mobile device management, our curriculum instructional management system, program evaluation, project management, professional learning, communications, and technical support. Working with Dr. Fiona Hollands of Columbia Teachers College, we've come up with a three-component project evaluation. The first one is looking at the fidelity of the DLE implementation itself. In other words, are we putting in place the support and structure to support achieving our educational goals? An example of that in terms of project management is, are we managing this project on time and on budget? In terms of professional learning, we're looking at, is the professional learning impactful and sustainable? The second component of our program evaluation is looking at the change in teacher practice. In your board report, we've given you some exhibits that define specific classroom behaviors and the frequency of those behaviors. That is the shift in teacher practice that we're looking for. And each one of those are aligned to our educational goals. In addition, we've defined the specific skills that teachers need to acquire to use the tools in the digital toolbox. So, once we have the fidelity of implementation, we provide the support and structure. Once you've achieved a shift in teacher practice and given them the skills they need to use the tools for the DLE implementation, then we will see a change in student outcomes. So, how are we measuring success? And let me say, in the last 20 years, I've worked with over 50 educational agencies in 17 different states. And I have to say, this is one of the most rigorous program evaluation processes that I've seen for technology implementation. We're collecting a lot of different data in each of those three program component areas. In terms of the fidelity of implementation, we have weekly DLE steering committee meetings. We review project management reports. One of those is Exhibit 5 in the board report, which shows the key milestones that we're managing the project to. We are collecting a variety of system reports from Schoology in terms of web analytics. Am I right? It's okay. It's okay? Sorry.
Are you okay?
It's not me, right? Something I said. Should I wait or should I continue? Continue, okay. So, some of the system reports would include, for example, SchoolDude is our work order system, and we can look at how quickly responding to work tickets. We have to make sure the technology is working for teachers in the classroom. We want to respond to that quickly if there's ever an issue. In terms of measuring change in practice and growth in teacher skills, we have technology readiness surveys. We have them in your board packet in Exhibits 1 through 3 for students, teachers, and principals. We've also worked with the principals of the Phase One schools to define the priority areas of the goals that they are hoping to achieve for Phase One. The November Learning surveys measure teacher satisfaction with the professional learning provided by November Learning. And we're also looking at the extent to which the professional learning aligns with our educational goals. So, we always stay focused on those. And then, in terms of the change in student outcomes, we're really excited about this piece, and Phil's going to talk to you about it more. But we're doing two controlled trial studies here, one in the area of student work. And Delica is going to help us review a fourth-grade science social responsibility unit using the current district rubric. And we have the control schools that are comparable to our treatment schools, which are the Phase One schools. And then, we're also looking at eSpark, which is an adaptive learning platform. And what that means basically is that when the students are on this system, it meets their specific needs where they are. So, if you're at the second-grade level, it gives you second-grade math quests. And if you're halfway through second grade, it gives you the second-grade math tests where you are. So, it's very adaptive based on the students. And we're using a nationally-normed assessment called Let's Go Learn. And we're looking, again, for Parkway, the growth in the grade level for the Common Core Math, for each of the five core domains of Parkway students versus the control school of Glenville. So, we're looking at, we collected baseline data in December, and then, we're going to look at growth at the end of the year. And it should give us a sense from a standardized test score whether or not an adaptive learning platform like eSpark is impactful on student outcomes. We're happy to answer more questions about that at the end.
So, a little bit of levity now to come back, and I'll start finishing up. Everything we do is to improve student outcomes. Everything. That's the point, that's the punchline. And we want two things, really. We want improved educational services, we want improved student outcomes. And we believe, we know, that technology represents the best promise to achieve improved outcomes. There is no way that you can personalize learning. There's no way that you can give more feedback that is quality than what you are presently giving. There is no way to even access online content and become a critical thinker of it without the use of technology. And again, there's that inevitability of all this information moving to the digital domain. And there's some information that lives in the digital domain that does not live in the physical. So, again, technology represents the best promise to achieve these improved outcomes. And when we say improved outcomes, we mean educational services and improved student outcomes. And by student outcomes, we do not construe that narrowly. So, while we will be successful on the S-Back assessments, for example, we are looking at more than the S-Back assessments. We are looking at, in each phase, beginning in Phase One, as you will see a reporter about at the end of the year, we are looking at whether students have internalized and developed some of the skills that we talked about. We're looking at other assessment data as one measure. We're looking at attitudinal feelings communicated via our survey instruments in Exhibits 1 through 3, where you have a teacher readiness survey, a student readiness survey, and administrator readiness survey. We're looking at technology skills assessments using learning.com. We are, again, looking at student achievement right now in our proof-of-concept at Parkway with eSpark, which is basically a learning platform that gives you a small assessment based on your performance, uses fancy statistical algorithms to then find automatically educational resources that are electronic that match your need. And then, it assesses you again. And then, it builds a heuristic around you. It builds knowledge about your performance and continues to personalize your experience based on that performance. And this is what we're doing in Phase One, six months later after August. So, to conclude, as you know, there's no magic bullet, but technology does represent the best promise to get those improved educational services that we talked about and improved student outcomes. Going back to our theory of action, that if we personalize the learning, we get better academic performance and we get better workforce readiness. So, that input of personalizing the learning, we're evaluating that at each step in each of those scope areas, and that's in the packet. If you think about what this initiative entails, it's basically a well-designed study with our student population. We have treatment schools in Phase One, control schools that we're not implementing certain pieces of the initiative with in Phase One. We're looking at the comparison along different measures of student outcomes. And this initiative takes three years to reach full implementation. That sale does not open fully for three years. And by year three, by the end of year three, the schools in Phase One will have been participating in the digital learning environment for three years. So, we'll have a narrative for those schools along the way, and you will be updated. And finally, no matter what happens, let's just agree that improving the educational process itself, especially to meet the realities of today's world, is a per se good. It's self-validating, and it will be accompanied by improved student outcomes, including increased standardized exam scores. So, on that note, thank you very much.
Very good. Jennifer?
Thank you for the tremendous momentum we already have on digital learning. And I also thank you, Nona, thank you so much. I can see you've done tremendous work. I have a two-part question for you. And I do not claim expertise in the field. I'm relying on an article from January Education Week. It states that "good platforms don't exist yet for learner profiles, grade books, and recommendation engines." Is that true in the Greenwich situation? And will Greenwich's digital learning program now or in the next two years allow acceleration through content as part of that measurement of personalized learning?
All right, so if I understand your question, the first is for me to assess the quality of the platform we have implemented here, especially given the context of that comment. And then, the second question I'm hearing is whether it is within the scope of this initiative to create processes for the acceleration of learning. All right. To answer the first component of your question, that's basically a value judgment as to the quality of the platforms. And what I always try to retain the discipline to do as someone who works in technology is to come back to our people, our process, that are supported by the technology. You have fabulous artists who have worked with the equivalent of sticks and stones. So, we really focus on supporting the people that are doing this work. And we focus on the processes, looking at what we're doing, trying to do it in a streamlined, more efficient way with less points of failure. And we try to be technology agnostic. So, the platform that we have implemented now in the form of Schoology, we believe best supports our current need, given how we've implemented this initiative. We had a rigorous process that chose it. We had a committee of educators in the form of our Digital Learning Advisory Committee, teachers, administrators, department officials, who participated in the selection of that system. That's how we selected the devices, that's how we make every decision in this initiative. You know, so, I hope that answers the first part of the question. As far as the second question, going to just looking at accelerated learning, that, again, is almost a normative judgment in that our goal is to personalize the learning. So, to say whether learning is accelerated or not is kind of a different way of how we look at it.
I think I've confused you a bit, I'm sorry. I'm talking about whether an individual student can not only follow a detour, as you showed with the road lanes on your slide, can not only detour but actually go forward if they are able to master the content. Can they go to a higher level?
I see that. My apologies, I understand. Yes, so, yes, they can, because we're trying to create a process where, much like higher education, higher education does a lot of things right process-wise. When you walk into a course in a higher education or an institution of higher education, you receive a syllabus that tells you everything that's going to occur for that year. You receive pieces of exemplar work. I went to law school, and the first day, we looked at all the exams that got high marks. On the first day, we knew what was expected, we knew, we had a good idea of what we'd be tested on, which directions to go in to self-regulate our own learning. So, we want to take the benefits of that model. And by implementing electronic portfolios in Schoology, pieces of student work that stand through time and space, pieces of student work that are consumable by not just that student, but if they choose to publish it to the commons of intellectual thought, other students can have the benefit of it. So, yes, the universe of that challenging content and that analysis will be available to students when implemented with fidelity here.
Just to follow up on Jennifer's question, who would control whether a child, say, let's say, for instance, math, which is always an issue? So, who would, or would anybody control how far, say, a third grader could go in a third-grade math book and could they then go on to fourth-grade math book? Is there some control or is this another thing automatically done through technology?
That's a great question. So, and again, just to anchor it in how we're looking at this, this is about personalizing learning. This is about your needs at your pace. So, aligning with that model, the student would control that. The student would say, "I need to learn this," or "I need to learn that." "I need to move through the material at this pace," or "I'd like to go into what we're doing next week." And I know third grade's a little touchy at the elementary level, but, again, we want that transparency, we want those educational opportunities to exist where if a student is interested in those resources, the student with support and scaffolding can explore some of those resources. But keep in mind that we have a rich curriculum. The third-grade curriculum is quite rich. So, there's a universe of content in just the third-grade curriculum for students to thoroughly explore. That's what we want. Just to answer two other questions quickly that the board submitted and present updates. There was one question about why Parkway was selected as the school within which we implemented the eSpark Adaptive Learning Proof of Concept. And the answer to that is that Parkway had an existing deployment of iPads. The iPad, surprisingly, is quite complex to manage as what we call an enterprise solution because it's inherently an individualized device. It's almost, it's as individualized as a tailor-fit suit, for example. And we had to learn, it took us some time to learn how to roll out large numbers of iPads. And Parkway had, not to the level of sophistication that has come since then, but they had figured out things a bit by that point. So, we thought there was a natural bridge since they had iPads there and because there had already been some professional development opportunities there to implement that program there to see its soundness. So, that was one question. And then, we had another question about And then we had another question about whether Schoology would enable us to measure the differentiation of learning and teaching. And I just wanted a point of clarification that Schoology has many features, one of which is allowing us to administer online assessments. So, in that model, Schoology is merely the delivery vehicle. The same way that we assess differentiated teaching today, using physical media and other forms, will be the same way that we do it using Schoology, it's just that the delivery mechanism has changed. So we'll continue to measure those things, and Schoology, I think, will be a little bit easier to use and certainly less cumbersome.
Peter?
First, so, you've got the educational goals outlined in here. Is there an additional goal directed to teachers and implementation?
Yes, so, when we originally began this journey, we actually started very abstractly. And we said, that some of you have heard me speak in other forums, have heard me say that, we are all learners. So, this has become so well internalized that when we use the term "students will," et cetera, what we're really talking about is anyone in this district who is learning will learn in this fashion, will realize the promise of these goals. So, although we did not explicitly articulate that teachers will become critical thinkers of online learning, or teachers will self-regulate their learning, it was implied internally. And when we have implemented this, we've worked very closely to create a structure, our governance structure for this initiative, where we have our Digital Learning Advisory Committee, a committee of educators and other people doing this work, administrators, educators, that makes many day-to-day decisions. We have a steering committee, which is a smaller group of that comprised of high-level district administrators, Ben Brany and Irene Perici. We have an executive technology advisory group, Mike Spilow and Joanna Steele from Iona College. And finally, we have an ambassador group, parents, students, and teachers. I'm giving you this laundry list to say that this has become the core of the district's work, it is informing how we do our work. What we're seeking to actualize for the students in the form of the personalization of learning and more quality feedback, by the very structure of this initiative and the people involved, is becoming how we do our work, it is the district's work. So we did not explicitly list goals for teachers.
Let me just add quickly, because I've been, as known in film though, I'm a bird-dogging the issue of evaluation. As you look at the evaluation design even this early in from Dr. Hollins, it does pinpoint, though, all those various learners. It does track teacher responses and progress, as well as students and all the rest. So the teacher piece is very real, once you get within those goals in terms of outcomes and tracking.
Follow-up. Just to talk about metrics, so the slides we saw tonight are kind of the first time we've seen measures for some of the educational goals. Some of them look like one-time measures to me, surveys. What are we doing for, and I'm going to use your terminology, continuous, meaningful, immediate feedback for all of those educational goals?
Great question. So the evaluation metrics you've seen this evening pertain to Phase One. We're in the process of creating longitudinal measures for later phases. We're certainly knee-deep in creating a menu of assessment and evaluation tools for Phase Two. But this is within Phase One. So, I think the heart of your question is whether, what process are we using to allow us to continuously monitor this? And what we've already gone and done is we've articulated organizational success metrics that were more clearly spelled out in the packet, that are going to be the metrics for the implementation of fidelity, or for the fidelity of implementation that we're monitoring on an ongoing basis. So if we're looking at the infrastructure, we'll be looking at some type of metric for uptime, for example. If we're looking at professional learning, for example, we have exit slips, we have surveys that we continuously give out with each professional learning session. So, this work will be sustained when we look at those organizational success metrics. So, just to short, the short form, without saying a lot of words, is there's a rich menu of metrics that we are tracking from now until time immemorial with this initiative.
Just one last follow-up. You mentioned there's going to be an evaluation at the end of Phase One. Will we actually have enough information from Phase One before moving to Phase Two implementation? I know you've already started some with procuring devices for the teachers, but given that the devices won't be in the hands of students for Phase One until February 5th, are you really going to have enough information?
So, if we think about the sources of that information, that information would come from the students, the teachers, and the administrators. So, to make this decision for the Phase Two rollout, we've recruited representative course sampling of administrators and teachers. We've engaged the building principals in discussion about the devices. We have the student technology readiness surveys that we will use to inform that decision as well. So, we believe that by engaging the direct participants in this initiative who will be impacted by that phase, we've already collected that information, we believe we have enough information to make the device selection. Because, again, this isn't a small group of two people making that decision, it's a representative course sampling of over 20 teachers and administrators that will be collectively making that decision.
I'm sorry, I haven't spent much time with the two of you, so this will be a first. I have questions in two categories, to use your taxonomy. I have process questions, which I'm much more interested in, and then I have tools questions. So, let's just talk about the process stuff for a minute. I read the goals on Page Nine, I probably should have seen them, read them earlier, I'm sure they were sent to me. Can you just tell me what these goals actually represent? Because the one that doesn't jump out for me, which is the second part of my question, is transformation of the learning process, the way we teach. And the goals kind of, I love that they're student-centered, starts with the word "student," but it's not obvious to me, these goals, and then how they connect to transformation of process. And I'll give you, and I'm not clear who's actually driving transformation of process. Is it you guys who particularly managing this from a overall program perspective and an IT perspective, or is that Irene that's actually driving the change in practice?
All right, so I'm hearing two questions. I'm hearing how the goals themselves triangulate to a change in practice. And then there's a question, I think, on the organizational structure to manage to those outcomes. So, in regard to the first question...
And there's an open door there. If it's not you that's supposed to be driving that, that's okay, you can tell me.
It takes a village, I mean, it really is a village effort. So in regard to the first question, when you review our Exhibits One through Three with the technology readiness assessments, or, excuse me, the technology readiness surveys that were given to teachers, administrators, and students, we ask teachers questions like, "How frequently have your math lessons required students to define a problem or locate information?" So, we're asking teachers specific, concrete questions about their practice. We're benchmarking it, we're applying the treatment of the initiative, and then we're going back and taking a post-test of that and measuring the change. So, I think your point is well-taken, that maybe, given the language or the nomenclature of the goals, certain elements, certain nuance doesn't jump out, and you go, "Well, how are the teachers changing?" But in the actual implementation, the instruments that we're using, the way that we're managing it, that's very well addressed.
Yeah, Peter, let me add in, because there's a core of this that actually is going on through how we're trying to reorganize how we do business in Greenwich. We are trying to move away from silos and the team-based. So, and there are growing pains on this. The group that Phil mentioned, it's Ben Brany and Irene as cabinet members, with the leadership coming most directly from Ben, I don't believe in dotted lines in organization, but with Irene actively in there. But that's part of the growing pains, to say that has to be, we're not in silos, we're not in different segments, but it's going to be much more team-based, but with still clear lines of accountability and authority. The network process, largely separate from this, but at the core is that same idea. Have we break out of silos, have we break out of isolation to work collectively and collaboratively? A lot of growing pains there. So, this is part of, as I see it frankly, a way to change how we do business in Greenwich and schools to get much better outcomes.
I won't spend more time on it. I'd like to get, I think I said this way back when this project started, and you don't know this, Phil, I have 25-plus years in IT. So, I've seen gazillion projects that pave the path of technology with existing process and practice. And, you know, transformation initiatives are all about, you start with the transformation and the technology enables, not the other way around. I'd like to get, Bill, if I could, you know, whatever format and whatever timing you guys are comfortable with, a much better understanding of transformation of practice, and then obviously I can see the technology is enabling that. So, I won't dwell on that. Let me move on to the tools part. First of all, I want to give you guys an incredible shout-out. When I read that part about all the changes you've made to improve performance, it was like hallowedly you're reading that finally we had an enterprise architect even what the heck they were doing. And I read through those changes, I know what all those things mean, that's the scary part. And what you guys did is fantastic. I mean, I'm glad you guys are here and finally taking care of our infrastructure, that's terrific. Device. We select, I never dug into this, maybe Ben, and, you know, we selected an iPad.
Yes.
Have, I don't want to revisit that debate, but have we, I was looking at the tools profile, digital toolbox, you know, so on and so forth. I'm not worried about the things that are out on the web. By the way, excellent choice to pick a SaaS product, we tended to buy software and install it, another good choice, congratulations. Did we, are we looking at building a digital toolbox that is operating system independent? So if we wanted to flip from Apple and we wanted to move to Android, did you, have you selected everything that is completely changeable? I mean, I'm watching the price of devices.
Yeah.
You know...
They've become commoditized.
Yeah, well, and I see Navi at, you know, a quarter of the price of one of these things, and it's an incredible device, and, you know...
Yeah.
So...
If I may, you really struck upon the right conclusion, and I would just vary the rationale a little bit.
Okay.
From a strategy perspective, we're definitely moving toward platform agnosticism.
Okay.
Platform independence. The reason, however, is that when you think about creating an anywhere, anytime learning model, I don't know if a student on vacation in India to visit their family will necessarily have an iPad in front of them to complete their work.
Sure.
So, and we want to provide that certainty to our instructors, to our teachers, so they know that when they assign an assignment tailored to the academic task, that the student will have access to the resources necessary to complete it. So the rationale behind moving toward platform independence is to realize that anywhere, anytime learning.
Let me just ask one other quick question. There's a, in the back of the report, there's a list of things, I think you surveyed parents, and there was a literacy and a math. I saw the learning tools and the rest of it. Other curricular, curriculum disciplines, are there other tools? Is that just a preliminary list, or are we looking to have for science, for social, a similar toolbox?
Well, yes and no. So, I'm going to turn it over to Nona, she's going to speak a little bit about the fourth grade social responsibility unit that we're looking at to evaluate within the scope of the initiative, and she'll update on where we're going with this.
But I thought you was asking, are we going to have music, are we going to have art applications, you're asking for other... We discussed that, and actually Irene is going to be forming Curriculum Council, and that committee is going to be taking recommendations from each of the program areas for tools to add to the digital toolbox. There's a process that she's setting up starting this month. I don't know if you want to talk more to that.
It's okay, you can tell me, I'll find. And then the last one was the MDM, I'm sorry, the mobile device management, what did you select?
That's correct, so we selected Meraki. And how much time do you have?
No, 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 just curious who you selected.
I want to provide one point of comfort.
Okay, thank you.
Just to quickly provide one point of comfort, we actually have a two-step device management process. What we learned from, some of you following the media with Los Angeles, where Los Angeles borrowed a billion dollars that the taxpayers are on the hook for, created a huge contract in scope with Apple, and rolled out $35 million of iOS devices using an MDM solution. Within hours, the students were able to go into the device and simply remove the ActiveSync profile, and then have unfettered access to the internet unsupervised. It was a huge learning moment for everyone in the nation doing this work. So what we did was, we did not just install an MDM solution on the devices with an ActiveSync profile that could not lock into the root, but we actually scoped this initiative where we took the labor hours to touch every device with Apple's configurator tool, which does go to the root of the device. So we install a Basil security profile that's unremovable, and then we lay our MDM protections on top of that, and then we force all internet traffic into an external proxy for the student devices.
Excellent. Peter, is that your last question? Okay, good, 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 good.
I realize these may not be exciting to the rest of you, but I think that's the point of the review.
Quite interesting. Okay. Thank you, yes, Laura.
I just have one question about the control school versus the DLE school. Is the assessment going to be based, presumably not on the technology, because there are technology at both schools? It's really on the DLE, on the environment, on the change in practice, on the training that November Learning has been giving the staff? Is that a correct assessment, or is it a little bit of both?
It's a little bit of both. So in eSpark, it's primarily the eSpark platform and then the training that's been given. But, and the control schools were chosen by Dr. Hollins, and she looked at both demographics and achievement. And then for the fourth grade social responsibility, it's, that's really just the whole DLE environment. So it's everything, it's hard to isolate one particular factor as the main variable on student performance. So it's hard to isolate that.
Well, that's my point, because if the results are a little different than what you expect, I wouldn't want the technology to be, I mean, there's so many other variables, so it has to be couched very carefully, the results.
That's a really good point. We're trying to, we really want to get this issue of how is technology impacting student outcomes, because that's what everyone wants to do, and so we're doing the best that we can with the variables that we have. And I think you're right, we should caveat it that way, because there are many variables that are impacting that.
Let me just add quickly here if I could, because there's a lot been said, but there are three pillars here, as Phil was speaking of earlier today, which go right back to the core of this. One pillar is the people, we're building the capacity of people to work in a technology environment. Two, as, and Peter picked up on this, the electronic, electrical system here, if you will, has been faulty, but we're working hard to fix that. The other piece of this is the devices. That may ebb and flow, that may change. What results we see, and goes to your question, Peter, we, there's a bet being placed going even to the second year, that the device focus will make the difference. The other two we have to have. There is no evidence in this country right now, unless you have children in districts that are rich, with staff who know how to work digitally, and are with a good electronic system, there's no evidence that that's going to be a successful system. Higher ed now is completely shifting to, if you don't show up digitally ready, you will not succeed. Same in the workforce. So I think we're, and the board has led us, led to this, is we got to keep that going. I think the particulars are going to be around the particular devices and all the rest. And that, that's what we're trying to understand.
Adriana?
I have two questions. One, Peter began to touch on, one of the concerns that I have is obviously with the insurance and the fact that some parents will not be able to afford insurance. And, you know, I assume obviously if a parent decides, "No, my child is not bringing that iPad home, I don't want to have to pay for it, he leaves it in the bus," you want to make sure the child can do the homework. So when Peter asked whether it's going to be, you know, platform independent or whatever, my technology's not where he is, but I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is going to allow that child to just log in at his desktop and be able to do his homework.
Yes, Ms. Espinoza, and just to reiterate some of what I answered before, we purposely, intentionally chose digital resources that were largely, one, free, and, two, that at the very least had a web presence that could be accessed on any type of device. In addition to bring some comfort to this issue that may cause some consternation of the liability, we have over-purchased devices. These devices, at least in Phase One, are scoped to last for three years. We created a 10% reserve of devices, because we expected to learn many things, and we wanted to minimize our risk exposure by effectively self-insuring. So if we have an approximate 3% breakage, loss, damage rate per year, we're in good shape with that 10% reserve. And that was based on both what I've seen in my career managing enterprise deployments of mobile devices and some other data.
And then my second question, and again, you know, forgive my technological ignorance, at the high school right now, and this I just hear from my kids, teachers are doing very many different things. The kids say that some teachers use Wiki something, and other teachers do this, and other teachers do that. And, and then, you know, you read in the report that the high school will stay with Aspen, even though the teachers will still have access to Schoology. We will implement the high school in one year. Is there, one, is it an objective to have the, all the high school teachers be unified and the tools? And are they going to have enough time? Because with, as you say, as the iPad is like a tailored suit, I think some of these applications are like a tailored suit. A teacher may be way more comfortable... A teacher may be way more comfortable with one. So to force them to use something else just because the other teacher is using it doesn't make sense. How, how are you dealing with that?
You're absolutely right. And we, and we try not to manage things by compulsion. So one thing that we've put in place to.
I love that.
One thing we put, you know, clear ideas win the day. So one thing we've put in place is to create that digital toolbox of apps in the phase one deployment where, working again with a committee of representative stakeholders, we've, we've identified and agreed upon a discrete set of apps that we're going to standardize practice around. We then work with our professional learning vendor to make sure they help us turnkey those practices to the workforce. With the lessons that we're learning from that, as we start to tackle the high school, we hope to do the same thing. But Dr. McCarthy had a, a great framework for understanding some of this, some of this issue you framed between, looking at the poles between choice and innovation sometimes. And we want people to be innovative, right? So we want to give them choice. We want to let them innovate, but we want to also ensure standards and consistency of experience. So what we learned in phase one and what we did to address this was, even though we had a digital toolbox of applications for teachers and students, we allowed the teachers to install additional apps on the device that they could play around with and effectively create a skunkworks. The students don't have the same ability, but the teachers do. And as the teachers learn from their choices and learn to innovate with their choices, they can then, going back to that process that Nonna spoke about, make recommendations about those apps and we're treating apps like we treat any other piece of curriculum. It's just as if someone, a teacher reads a fantastic book and says, you know what? All of my third graders really should read this book. There's a process there. And then we look at that and we figure out how that satisfies systemic need.
I just have one last question. What's your biggest challenge going forward?
That's a great question. The one question I came unprepared to, to address. Well.
Let me, let me jump in because it's not, I mean, why?
Putting my foot in my mouth. That's my.
Is it a hardware question? Is it infrastructure? Is it people? Is it, is it apps? Where, where do you see your biggest challenge going forward?
Well, what keeps me up at night is, is risk. It's managing, like any project, you, you manage to revenue, but people don't always manage to risk. And that has a, that has a value. So for all of the different failure points in an initiative that's this big and this complex, as diligent as we are, and we are in fact obsessed with diligence because there are so many failure points, it, it's always just, you know, what if I'm not triple-checked or quadruple-checked or how has the technology evolved such that there's a way that things can go off the rails?
Okay. Right. Anyway, thank you so much for your work and thank you to all the principals who embraced this initiative.
Thank you.
The next topic is the, results of the school calendar survey. Dr. McCarthy.
Yeah, Kim, Kim Eads is going to lead us through this and, and my biggest concern is how we keep Phil Donner everybody working efficiently and well and given everything that's in front of them. Kim's going to lead us through the discussion of the survey.
I'm just going to summarize the report and the, the survey process and results really quickly and then let you have your discussion and ask any questions you might have. We had 3,432 unique respondents to the survey. That represents about 45% of GPS families and about 55% of GPS staff. 117 respondents identified themselves as both parents and staff members. So some of the numbers don't add up when you separate some of the different reports that are in the back of the summary report. 52% of the respondents identified option C, the week before President's Day is the preferred option. 75% of the respondents collectively prefer at least a one-week winter recess. That's options B and/or C. And option A only received 25% of the respondents. That's the extended weekend as it stands now on the 2014-15 school calendar. We do know that there were some concerns about the opportunity for individual respondents to submit multiple surveys, so I wanted to address that now. Given the time constraints for creating and administering the survey, it was not, there was not enough time to develop an electronic system that could individually survey each potential respondent. However, we did take measures to ensure that the results of the survey were credible. We did make it explicit that we only wanted one survey per household. We reviewed the response rates per building to identify any total responses that would exceed those expectations. The only place that happened was at North Mayana School in the staff survey where there was 107% respondents. And we researched that and identified the fact that many of the parents at North Mayana are also staff members. So if they identified themselves as both, that's why there was the higher rate than the number of staff they're actually assigned to North Mayana. Finally, we reviewed IP addresses from which the surveys were submitted. And as the report details, at least 85% of those surveys submitted are presumed to have come from individual respondents. The remaining 15% originated from duplicate IP addresses outside of the GPS. They may be suspect, but they may also easily be explained by multiple individuals completing the survey at a library or a Starbucks, for example. While we can't know for sure, we do know that the vast majority of the surveys did come from individual respondents and based on the low quantities, two to eight, of duplicate respondents from any given IP address, we believe the overall survey outcomes are credible. If you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer, otherwise.
Comments, questions? Jennifer?
Seems like a no-brainer. I couldn't be happier with the results generating a consensus, so I think we can move ahead.
Okay. Oh. Peter?
Sorry, sorry.
Don't run, Kim.
Okay.
Don't go so fast. I know this time.
I just wanted you to have your chance to deliberate.
You can't leave, Kim. I know this time out, obviously, we were in a time crunch, but you know, I, I certainly was concerned about the ability to respond more than once. I caution you, if we're going to do surveys in the future, we should probably identify that tool now. 15%, it's, it's significant, right? Statistically significant. And if you, you know, take it away from one and add it to the other, you've got a dead heat.
Well, we just need more notice. We can do it. We know how to do it. It's just we need more time. So we need more notice.
So the, the survey tool allowed for people to respond as many times as they like. Some people responded up to eight times from the same IP address. Now, there's a chance it could have been people sitting at the library, but we should identify a means to do this in the future where we don't have that kind of overlap.
We, we gave Kim all of three days, I think, so.
Oh, I know. It's, it's a timing issue, but I'm, I'm talking about future potential survey use.
We have, we have the ability to do it. It's just we need more time to set it up.
How much time?
Well, I'll leave that to the IT folks to tell you. All right. And it also depends on what else is on the plate at the time.
That's right. But it's interesting going forward. But anyway, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Adrian.
I, I wanted to thank you. I mean, it was, as Bill pointed out, we, we should not base decisions merely on surveys. Surveys have a lot of issues. This was one issue that, that most of the board was particularly interested in hearing it. We gave you very little notice and, and you guys did a great job and the people did a great job. I mean, it was Christmas and, and to have all of these parents take the trouble to respond, I think it was, so thank. The teachers, yeah. So thank you.
Of course.
Thanks a lot, Kim. The next item is the report on facility.
Before we go on, can I get, can we get an understanding of, you know, generally what people actually think about the results and the recommendation and do we have different points of view? I know a point of view was expressed, you know, prior board meeting, actually, I think a board member actually called, you know, the parents who were about this, the noisy rabble.
Peter, are you making a motion?
No.
Okay.
I think we're in a work session and the purpose of work session is to discuss items before we get to the next meeting where we actually take them up. And I guess I'm trying to understand with the results of this, where fellow colleagues of the board are on this issue. I know there was also some concerns of people about going back and changing the calendar because decisions had already been made. So before we scoot off this item and we took the, I'd like to get an understanding kind of where people are based upon the survey that we took.
We're going to vote on that at the next meeting, whether we accept these results and where we're going to go with the, with the calendar. Adriana?
I'll, I'll answer your question because I, I voted in favor of shortening that February break and, and I've since, you know, changed my mind. I mean, I'm not swearing in blood how I'm going to vote, but I certainly have looked at it from a different perspective. We, we were hampered by three years of extremely bad weather at the beginning of the year and, and that's not going to be the case. I, I will always be concerned with two things. One, Laura very eloquently mentioned it at the beginning, it's, it's not good precedent to reopen things. On the other hand, you know, I think we, we need to make it very clear to ourselves and to the community that, you know, we're willing to make an exception for the calendar because of how much it has touched people emotionally, but it's not good board practice. The second thing, you know, we got to pick our fight. So if, if this issue is so important to the families and, and it doesn't hurt, to me, we got an email from someone saying that we were elected to, and the words were something is to protect and enhance the families of the town of Greenwich. No, we were elected to make decisions based on what we think is the best educational effect on our kids. So if the calendar does not have such a strong effect on the education, one way or another, then I'm, I'm fine with listening to what the community wants, so.
Okay. And I guess then I add some one question. Bill, in your memo, I think I read, the administration is comfortable if we follow more or less what came, what people asked for in the survey. I forget what the line was.
Yeah, no, the, I, at the end, and, and at least Adriana did notice, I did add a paragraph there, advisory, I mean, the board can take or leave that paragraph. I respect that you may. Just, I would urge you to make the decision based on multiple sources of evidence. I mean, Peter, I did raise your 15% question as Kim knows and as we looked at this. I think it's actually a smaller issue than that, but it's a great question. But I think using multiple sources of evidence on this is key. I, as other superintendents in the region, respect that the board owns this issue and make the decision on it. Today, we did get the task force for the unified regional school calendar, the uniform, and I'll send that to the board tomorrow. They are advocating the earliest implementation date now, 2016, 2017, with a potential for waiver to 2017, 2018. So I think that does relate, meaning that I think decisions on calendar will really be still owned here for at least the next couple of years. But, so I don't know if that's a helpful response.
I, you know, just so you know, I mean, not a surprise where I am. I've always been a strong advocate of this because I think the parents were very vocal on this and, you know, I think also there was, you know, looking at other worldwide districts in other countries, they have this pattern of this on and off, six to eight weeks in blocks. So for me, this is a, and, and an easy decision to make and I plan to go for it.
Okay. All right. There's no more comments. We'll move on to the next topic. The next topic is the facility utilization and racial, racial balance update. I'm going to do a little backtracking, a little history on this so that we're all up to date of where, where we, where we are and where we came from. So the purpose of this agenda item is to determine the board's next steps in addressing facility utilization and racial balance challenges. Over the past year, we've taken up this topic and evaluated and used all sorts of alternatives to address the state's letter that Greenwich Public Schools are out of compliance with the state regulation on racial balance and we also addressing the overcapacity issue at New Lebanon School. On October 24th meeting, the board voted, it was in their best interest to try and reach a mutually acceptable resolution with the State Department of Education. And based on conversations with the State Department, they're expecting Greenwich to respond to their request for an amended plan, which is different wording, it's a little bit more gentle wording, which may credibly be expected at a minimum to stabilize and hopefully to improve statistics. This is a far cry from their earlier requests that we meet certain percentage points. So the Greenwich Board of Education has already voted on certain actions which have comprised some of or all of an amended plan. These actions reinforce the board's commitment to neighborhood schools and prioritize academic achievement and consider the facility's utilization at New Lev and have a positive impact on racial balance. The decisions that we've already made are to evaluate the magnet themes at HAMAB and develop an identifiable unifying theme supporting academic achievement at HAMAB. This modification will allow a sharper focus on achievement for all students and have the potential of attracting additional magnet students. The administration is to complete this work by March 30th, 2014. The other decision made by the board is to evaluate programs and services focused on the achievement gap and achievement for all students at New Lev, HAMAB and Julian Curtis. Also focus on programs that target K3 reading, technology to personalize instruction, data to drive instruction and programs to increase parent involvement and other strategies that focus on achievement. It would be expected that this program would make the three of the current magnet schools more attractive to new magnet families. The administration is to complete this work by March 30th, 2014. The other decision made by the board is to add Western Middle School with its middle years international baccalaureate program as a partial magnet school for all students in the district. Greenwich students have the opportunity of an IB program at New Lev and International School of Dundee. The ability to continue this program into the middle school years may encourage more families to choose to be a magnet family at both the elementary and secondary levels. The fourth decision made by the board is to evaluate renovation and/or expansion of New Lev to create additional magnet seats. Also to serve the increasing neighborhood enrollment and support 21st century learning environment. As part of the study, consideration will be given to the impact of accommodating additional magnet students as well as the needs of the neighborhood students. If this action is part of an approved racial balance plan, then the project may qualify for 80% state reimbursement of eligible construction costs. The funding for the feasibility study is included in the 2014-15 capital budget. The administration was asked to identify short-term strategies to address overcrowding at New Lev by February 20th, 2014. The other decision made by the board is to evaluate the rules existing, surrounding the existing magnet school program, including transportation, middle school assignments and lottery protocols. At the December 19th meeting, 2013, there was a discussion of the draft of the lottery protocol. The discussion was concluded by a decision to have the administration relook at these suggested revisions. There are also some other ideas that were discussed, such as, such as additional elements of, if the board believes that we need to add additional elements or put additional elements into the plan, the other strategies that were addressed was modifying the current elementary choice options and/or look at the underutilized, all the three underutilized elementary schools and expanding preschool in underutilized schools. So those are other options that we discussed. So that's sort of a background of where we, where we were, where we are. And so the next steps that we need, that we can talk about are the activities that are underway, some of which we've listed above in terms of the K3 reading process, focus on family environment, all those are things that could be part of our plan. And the board will have an opportunity to discuss those ideas when the plans come before us in, in March. The board from the very beginning has said, all decisions that will be made will be made in the best interest of our students and to the district. Our priorities, our academic achievement, appropriate facility utilization and racial balance. Based on our priorities, the board needs to determine its response to the state for amending our 2007 racial balance plan. So the options that stay, that are before us based on past history, they're not the only option, but they're the options based on what we've done so far, is the first decision that we have to make is to, whether we decide to submit a plan or not to submit a plan that would stabilize and potential, and have a potential to improve racial balance. So that's the first decision that needs to be made. The second decision, if we decide to submit a plan, that plan, that amended plan would, as part of that plan would be. as part of that plan, would be reviewing our status as unique schools, and that would be part of it. The other part would be to describe all approaches to address racial balance. These actions would include the existing programs and activities that we just mentioned. You know, in terms of literacy, the use of technology, before and after school tutoring, outreach to the community, involvement and coordination with community agencies, and parent education programs. Those are some of our existing activities that we're doing to address racial balance and just address achievement in general in the district. New decisions that were made in the 14-15 budget included summer school, at the free and reduced lunch price for all students K to 3 who are not achieving at grade level. It also included $100,000 in the capital improvement plan for feasibility study of New Lev. And the plan could include the new recommendations from the administration that will be part of, that will be the outcome of their achievement gap committee results in March. So you have the plan, no plan. The second option shortly, in a few words, says, "Use what we have currently, what we're currently doing, and that which might come out of the March achievement gap report." The third option is to submit a plan that includes what we're doing, what might come out of the March plan, and include another element, if the board feels that they need to include another element to the plan. And that element, whatever element that is, would have to identify what the goal of that element is, whether it's to move students or not. If this is a selected path that we think we want to go, then we should ask the administration to identify alternate proposals and using involvement from the parents and the community. So that's where we are in terms of possible options. I would also recommend that the administration, when they're looking at their March achievement gap report, that they would look at the state statute on community schools and look at elements of that as possible inclusion in our own plan. Many of the things that we're doing align with what's in that document, things that we've been doing for years, but just to have that alignment with the state law. So that's where we are. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Because this is something that we will take up at the next board meeting and decide where we want to go.
Would it make sense for the board to talk informally about submitting a plan or not submitting a plan? Because I think that sets up the next meeting. Is that appropriate? I'm asking the chair, that's appropriate?
Yes, that's fine. Don't want to do that. Mr. Van Bronck.
I think it would be foolish of us not to submit a plan. And we have a great deal of latitude to what the content of that plan can be, but to stick a finger in the state's eye is just sibilance.
I totally agree. I think-- Mrs. Dayton?
I have always supported submitting a plan. I think we have a lot of leeway we can work with. We don't want a confrontation with the state, and we don't want the state coming back to us telling us our plan is insufficient. So I'm thankful to hear the three of us would like to submit a plan, and I would love to hear from the others.
If they choose to make a comment. Laura.
Yes, I think we should submit a plan. The only distinction I have is, I think last year, the board was talking about submitting a plan, and now we're talking about amending a plan from 2007. So I think we just need to be sure that we have that baseline of the 2007 plan that we work from.
Right. And you'll be getting that plan? Yeah.
Also, Ann, just want to say, I also support submitting a plan.
I support submitting a plan. And Dr. Mcursie, I'm wondering if you can advise us whether we are better off amending the 2007 plan or creating our own new fresh plan?
I mean, in most cases, it's an amendment, it's a build-up forward from where you've been, and that's what they're looking for. But in the amending, you can also go into very new territory. Over the last six, seven, eight months, as every superintendent in the state does, you've talked to the commissioner, and I've talked to the commissioner. He would hope we'd be aspirational in our plan, but also pragmatic. So to me, translating that into issue of whether you amend or not, you would amend, but also try and aspire to a better place, which may mean that you make some changes. But I think that's, amending is the place to start.
I think amending, it gives us the opportunity to explain why the magnet school did not, was not successful at New Lev in terms of space, and then it would be a prelude to our request for monies to the 80% reimbursement to look at the facility at New Lev and expand it and make it more suitable as a learning environment.
I think amending it would be a mistake. It's very dispensive to say, "Well, we submitted a plan that was just a total mess, and it didn't work, and we didn't achieve any of the goals we were trying to achieve," as opposed to say, "Look, we took a fresh look at the situation. We take a serious look at the needs of the population you're trying to create, an improvement for whom you're trying to create an improvement, and we think there's some very specific things that we can do that will raise their academic achievement to the point that they will be more successful in life," which after all, is what we're all about.
Yeah, it's a great, if I may, Barbara, just clarify. Amending in the sense that what I'm saying is go back to look at that plan and build on it in terms of the content of the work, we have to find ways to be far-reaching. You know, you aren't in the same place on that. We have to find ways to look at the achievement gap and narrow that. That's what we're looking for in terms of what will come back in March. So amending, in my view, is let's go back to where we were, build from that, which may mean some pretty substantial changes. If you just go through, as the chairwoman did, what you've already decided, that's pretty significant. That, to me, is not simply just amending, because there are points the board has agreed on here, voted on, that were not in place in '07. So I just want to be clear, amending is just where were we, and let's build from there. But don't limit ourselves.
I think we'll probably go back and look at the language that we received from the state, and whether they ask us to amend it or whatever, and we'll do whatever, whatever they say for us to do.
Okay, that part I don't agree with, but here and there. I think amendment is a technical, legal distinction. I, you know, I think we should have it under advice of counsel. It's not something the eight of us should figure out. I do think the, you know, which is the more important part, you know, we don't know where the board members, the new board members are, but we knew where the, unless people on the old board had moved. I think we left off with, you know, I disagree with your comment, which I think I heard you say, which is, "We want to submit a plan and have evaluated our unique school status." I mean, those were the words, but maybe, anyway, let me just finish, and then you can respond. I think we landed in a very good place in the last board. It is an open question from a legal perspective. We have our point of view with our advice of counsel. The state has its point of view on its position regarding whether or not we have unique school status or not. That's an important advantage for us, and I think it gives us a flexibility to do what I think the board in the last group decided to do, which is, let's focus on achievement and outcomes for children, and, you know, not have our whole plan driven off of being a slave to some, you know, technical quotas. Now, I think as a result, we should submit a plan. I'm going to advocate that it's kind of what has been outlined as option two. I think we should be careful in the submission of our plan, that we preserve any and all rights that might accrue to Greenwich, don't inadvertently give those up. But the plan should focus on the outcomes we're looking for, and of course, the new board members have, you know, we have to hear their perspective. But the, to the point that Barbara outlined, there were five or six things that we all built a consensus around in the last board. I would hope that that would be the foundation upon which we could build. You know, just to jump ahead to the end, I think we should submit a plan. It has to take into account the plan we already have. I'm of the belief that magnet schools and the magnet schools' plan that we already have is the basis for this position potentially on unique schools, so it'll be necessary to work from that and preserve that. But that, I would suggest we submit a plan, potentially with the decisions we've already made, if that's acceptable to everybody else. And then let's see if the state, you know, if that works for the state, or they have a different point of view. I don't think we need to do a lot of mental math with them. We need to submit a plan that makes sense for Greenwich, that reflects Greenwich values, and then we need to hear back from the state based upon that outcome.
I think that's what we've already agreed to, and I believe, you know, speaking to everybody, there's a good consensus about our focus on achievement as our main focus, and that the facility utilization and racial balance, and they're all tied in. And as far as unique schools, I do not, you know, advocate giving up our interest in being a unique school or declaring ourselves a unique school. I think we should be cautious about how we word it. We don't want to--
Antagonize.
That's a good word, antagonize the state. So I, but I recognize that you don't give up a position that you might want to fall back on, even if it's a, you know, a thousand-to-one shot. You want to have all your options open. So I think, Mr. Van Bronck? Did you want to say?
I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I was just about to say, that's where I, you know, a good many of us are, and we'll be voting on it next week, but certainly, comments are welcome.
I simply wanted to ask Dr. Mcursie if there has been any change in the state commissioner's status after he was caught with his hand in the cookie jar.
I mean, he's still very much the commissioner and moving along, and his--
Charter School Company is bigger?
I can't speak to any of that, and I won't, but I do know they are awaiting decisions from this board. They have made that clear, so.
I agree with a lot of what Peter said.
I think, one, whether it's an amended plan or a new plan, the unique school status, that's more a legal terminology. I don't think we as a board need to spend a lot of time just to assure everybody, unless we specifically say we give up the right to call, you know, we can submit a plan and we can be silent on unique school status, and that doesn't mean we're giving up the right. So I don't think we should spend a lot of time on that. The one thing that I think it's, at the work session, you just said we're going to vote the next time, which, so I think if we're going to vote then, we should today, in whatever way you want to do it, but at least identify whether any of us want to add any other element to the five that are here, because if, you know, the other elements that have been there have been school of choice, pre-K, so we're going to consider adding that. I think this is the time to have a discussion on that. I think if we wait to bring them up when we vote on it, it's not going to give the community time to comment, and in case, you know, we want more data from Bill, we also need to give him time.
That's a good point. Does anybody see themselves submitting a plan that would include an additional element?
I'm, if we're waiting until the end of March to get the administration's report, aren't we being a little bit premature in making decisions about the composition of the plan at this stage?
Maybe I've made a false assumption.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to add, I mean, I was on the same point. So I was about to ask, what is it we're voting on next week? Is it that we're voting on direction of the board? Because I think you're right, we're not going to be in a position to have the content to submit a plan until we get back from the administration. So are we voting as a direction, or what are we actually, what is the motion that we're voting on?
The motion would be, if we're going to add an additional element to the plan, because if that's what we choose to do, then that's something the administration would have to be aware of, so that they could put it as part of their achievement gap process. They would have to be aware of that.
I guess, I get that part. I guess I'm asking a question, so maybe it's a two-part question. Next week, we would have a motion before us that says, "It is the sense of the board that the board will prepare a plan to be submitted to the state that includes these five areas." And then we're saying what? After we get the report back from Bill and all the reports come back, then we're having a subsequent discussion about what of those items are actually in and out. I guess what we're, I, I'm not understanding what the process is that we're going to move through here.
Okay. Debbie wanted to say something.
Quick question. Do, is the board writing the report, writing the plan, or is the administration writing the plan? So if the administration is writing the plan, then we can say we would like a plan submitted, we would like it to incorporate the things that we've already done, and those aspects of achievement gap closing measures as they determine from that report. And we can leave it to them, because it'll come back to us. We don't have to have that information to make that decision.
Yeah, I was guessing it's a different point. The board, the report, I think it comes from us. They're writing it on our behalf.
Right.
The point is, they can do that. We can get them started without having all the information.
This is our racial balance plan. So we could, and I don't have a strong opinion either way, we could go, we could submit a racial balance plan independently of our achievement gap study, because in our plan, let's say we decide, just for the sake of argument, we decide to, that this is our plan. You know, we can allude in our plan that we're also doing a study on achievement gap. The state says the racial balance law is about racial balanced numbers, it's not about achievement. We also obviously know that the end game is because there's concern that schools with high percentage of minorities, the achievement is not as high, and we as a board also want achievement, have always said achievement is our end. But I don't think we need to wait to vote on a plan to have the result of the achievement gap study.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we need, what I think we need to do is to vote on whether we're going to submit an element or not.
Right.
The additional element, and then let the administration write the plan that would address achievement gap, because the achievement gap will deal with racial balance, because the idea is to improve, part of that is to improve achievement in those schools in order to--
So that they become more attractive.
That's right. And then, as part of the plan then, to look at the expansion of New Lev, so they're all tied together.
This is the place, Adriana. I'm confused. Item two, when we left off in the last board, was all of this stuff that came out of this community schools plan. And I think we now, we've all learned, and Peter Van Bronck has pointed it out quite nicely, we have a huge advantage, because oddly, the state, with its community schools initiative, which we all heard about when we were in Mystic, is exactly what they're targeting at the bottom 20% performing schools in the state. So I think that gives us an enormous advantage, because we're looking at deploying tactics that are the same that the state is actually doing in the lowest performing schools. No, we don't, not the lowest performing schools. But I thought where we left off was we commissioned Bill to go away, and one of the things that he was--
He didn't go away.
Hold on.
He didn't go away.
No, no. He and his staff to go away, and they were going to go look through all of the items that were listed in the community schools proposal, plus others, and then he was going to come back to us at the end of March and say, "Here are the ones that I think might go together programmatically, plus others that we might see that would improve achievement there." The question that I'm asking is, there could-- The question that I'm asking is, there could be eight items that come out of that, two items that come out of that, don't know what they are. I'm trying to get my sense of before we submit to the state, because I think you're evaluating all of those. When do we actually see all those and vote that they are in or out of the plan? That's the procedural question I'm stuck on.
And my question to Bill then is, do we have to have that study and decisions? Because the timing is tricky. The study, the study on achievement gap measures and strategies comes in March. We still as a board will then have to vote on which ones we're going to implement, the funding for them and all of that. And that, my question to you, Bill, is the, how specific do we have to be in a racial balance plan about what we're going to do for achievement?
For the other districts in the state that have successfully gotten over the goal line on this issue, it is, it's a multi-year iterative process. So it could very much be that there are some very definite tangible decisions by the board. For example, regarding New Lebanon and space. For example, the magnet school decision at Western Middle School, your other parts of the list. You could also though be saying that the achievement gap is not satisfactory to any of us and we are doing something as we've never done before to do a very serious look at it. And then to come back with a set of changes and approaches that are systematic, which we can't race into. But as of even March, here is that preliminary analysis on where we are. Here are then a set of preliminary decisions on the board on where to head. But some of the implementation out of that may not yet be for another year or two. I think right now in 2014, with actually the data we do have, where we have been narrowing the achievement gap. And there's SBI data would say we don't have the widest gap in the state. We actually, because we have the highest performing schools in the state, there's data there to say we should be very cautious. We got to fix it, but we can't rush in. And I think the state would honor that if there's some other tangibles there, if I'm being clear.
Just to aid the discussion of community schools, so everybody understands what it is, it's about turnaround schools. So we talked about the bottom 25 to 30 schools in the state as designated by the Commissioner of Education. So the bill that you guys have talked about, just so you know what it is, in order to establish a community school, there's a multi-step process. You've got to do a school operations audit, a community operations audit, and then finally develop a plan. The General Assembly's Office of Fiscal Analysis said that any district that does this would incur a significant cost. They actually spell out that to do this for a elementary school would be between a half million and $600,000. Once you do this and you submit your plan to the state and if they accept it, guess what you get to do? You do annual plans. So to me, what that sounds like is more Hartford oversight, not less. What we've got now is a very similar situation where we will be submitting iterative plans, so just so we're aware of what's in there.
I don't think anybody's advocating doing that. I think we're just looking at the elements of it and saying, we've already been doing lots of these, is there anything we're not doing? So we've already had our own community plan for years.
Right, but we should understand this is not about racial balance. This is totally focused on academic achievement.
But I think as a board, we've always said that academic achievement was our priority.
And I definitely made it. Clarification is very important since it's a public meeting and things can get reported out. As I understand it from the administration's standpoint is, the community school statute is a set of powerful ideas, concepts and approaches and practices that we should look at to see what can we adopt here in Greenwich, not go after that statute because, well, we don't qualify. Because we are a high performing district. But how do we go after those ideas and then use that argument back on the state to say, we're using these ideas and you're using them too? Is that, well, I see it from the administration's standpoint. If that's where the board is, then we're in.
And I think when you look at those elements, you'll see that we do almost every single one of them. So it's just maybe more an intense, yeah. Jennifer?
I just want to be very clear because it's a public meeting. I reject the notion that we are aligning with the Act Concerning Community Schools. The Act Concerning Community Schools sets up local governance councils. Non-elected boards are put in place, made up of school staff, community organizations, and it is not at all the direction we want to head in. Second of all, many of the things that they provide are not elements we would look at at all. So we need to pick and choose from a variety of sources to come up with a racial balance plan. I just want to be very careful to assert again that we are not aligning with the Act on Community Schools.
I think it's appropriate to point out that there are two community schools plans. And the state has its own that has a very specific function. And then we have a Greenwich community schools plan that draws, that is the result of parallel development, but is, neither is copied one from the other. And there's some things that are common to them that are very specific in terms of what can be done to significantly improve the education of the kids who are the lowest achievement group in the town.
And I think at the November 7th meeting that we voted to make sure that many of those elements are part of the plan. You know, the K-3 literacy, involvement of the community, on and on. So they're there.
Yeah, I would just like to offer that, that, you know, from the standpoint of our plan, that I don't think we need to label anything nor should we label anything. We should just include the elements that make sense for us and we know what those are.
Laura?
I'm very comfortable with the work that the board did on this throughout last year, although we weren't part of the board, the newborn members, we certainly weren't most of the meetings and most of the forums and heard most of the feedback. In terms of signaling, Peter really wants to know where I stand, so I support option number two. I think all the work that has gone on has been good work and I'm comfortable anticipating what additional information we'll get in March and I think that'll be the basis of a good plan to submit to the state.
Adriana?
The only issue I have a little bit of concern with is the fifth, evaluate the rules surrounding existing magnets, because we really didn't do that. When we looked in December, it was, and I asked that question, and it was specifically tailored to look at magnet rules with regards to tuition students. So we never have looked at magnet rules with regards to racial balance and facility utilization. So I'm, I'm not, neither here nor there, I just want to point out that we have not done that step.
Peter?
That's the reason I'm making the point of when do we get into the details? Because in candidly, looking at West Hartford's plan, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but I think a deeper level of specificity about some of the things is more likely to be more helpful to the state. If it's too short and too abbreviated, again, we're just potentially inviting trouble. And, you know, as an example, we did not complete the discussion on lottery rules, which said, and one of the questions I don't think we fully explored, was to the degree that, I mean, we had a former board member who took advantage, and rightfully so, rightfully so, who, you know, lived in the New Lebanon district, moved their kid to JC and the kid went to Central. You have to, it begs the question, I'll call it the elephant in the room, you know, to the degree that that facilitates people leaving New Lebanon or Hamilton Avenue. These are just some of these questions that I don't think we've fully understood. And I would propose, I'm in the same place you are, I think number two makes a fine start. Let's start with number two. And, but at some point, I think in some of these areas, there's some loose ends and we need to talk about them as a group before we submit to the state.
The, at the last meeting, we discussed the lottery rules and there was a lot of input and whatever and we sent it back to the administration for refinement. So that has just to come back to us. So, so that is sort of a loose end, but being addressed.
But the document specifically said magnet rules with regards to tuition students. It's on the paper.
Yeah, I think it'd be very reasonable for the board to say what it looked at and you procedurally kept it a procedure and said, for this upcoming year, superintendent and team, please deal with this and take an advisement, what we just, what you as a board discussed. As I read number five here and I'm hearing the discussion here, it would say, that would be then a set of work that still needs to be done, looking at years beyond next year, if I'm being clear.
Jennifer?
This is just a personal comment. I think the issue of unique schools should remain open until the next meeting. I'm not there yet.
Open in what way?
In terms of, I don't think this meeting should decide whether or not we make that assertion in a formal way. Could we leave that open until the next meeting?
Everything's open until the next meeting.
Which night? The 23rd?
To the January meeting.
Oh, okay.
Not to the March, to the January.
But if I'm just right, we're going to get a motion. Someone's going to form a motion that we're going to look at that's going to say, it's the intent of the Board of Education in Greenwich to submit a plan that asserts this, includes these items and what have you, and then that's what we're essentially voting on. Then, and my hearing right, somebody's going to go away and prepare the plan. And then eventually that will come back to the board and we'll have one last look and probably vote that to the affirmative and send it to the state. Is that the procedure we're like that?
But I'm with Jennifer, Peter. I think where Jennifer and I are comfortable is number two says, assert unique school status and here are the elements. Right. Well, you know, I'm of the mind, if, you know, if our attorney, and I would like the opinion of our attorney, says unless you in the preamble of your plan assert unique school status, it may be interpreted that you're losing it, then I'm fine. But if it's not, if not including it in a big preamble, like we assert unique school status, but by the way, since we do want the 80% reimbursement, here is our racial balance plan. You know? I'd rather just not put it there.
Right. I, I heard you when we spoke today, and yes, about being part of our plan or being, you know, reviewing it as part of our plan, but to soften the language because we don't want to hit them between the eyes with, look at what we're doing, no matter what you think. So, yeah. All right, can we move on?
So is somebody, as a result, between now and next week, are we going to have a conference call or a closed session with our attorney so that we can get an answer to this? Because by the way, I think people, the sense I'm hearing is preserve the right. I, that's the consensus I think I'm hearing. I'm not wedded to, let's go hit them between the eyeballs with a Paul Beenhammer, but I, I think the consensus is preserve that. And we certainly do that.
I think, I think we're all in the same place and I think there's other topics to be addressed at the next meeting, so we will move on. We have a discussion. Thank you. The monitoring reports, the first one is the reading of E08, Public Involvement in Schools. Hand please.
Sorry, I just, I don't, I don't feel we've settled it. I just, next meeting we vote. Do we have an answer that from Bill that it's okay to make reference? Then I take it that we concluded that it's enough to make reference to the achievement gap study, that we don't need the results?
Right.
Okay. Then my second thing, at the next meeting, because we haven't really discussed other options. Is somebody going to suggest other elements at the next meeting?
That's what, that's what we asked before.
Okay, so we're hearing now. Okay. So the, and then what are we going to do about that number five? I just, and I'm sorry, I just, if we're going to vote at the next meeting, I'd rather have all the issues out. The number five is this lottery.
We'll get, we'll get back to you with some wording on that lottery. I'll see where we are in terms of what we discussed at the last meeting and we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you about what the attorney thinks about unique schools and how to work it. Okay? So those are two things that we need to do. Okay? All righty. So, go ahead.
Hello again. I'll just briefly introduce the report and then happy to take any questions you have. I didn't receive any before the meeting. I just, I'd like to clarify particularly for the, for the newer board members that there are three policies, board policies that touch on public or parental involvement including communications. Just want to differentiate or clarify the differences between the three. E040, which you're going to hear later on this evening, really addresses parental involvement and communication with the academic progress of parents' individual children. O51, which you will receive in March, really addresses the communication systems and the communication plans for the district. And O80, this monitoring report addresses volunteers and visitors and general community involvement. We are very fortunate to have very strong parental involvement in all of our schools and tremendous support from community organizations, town departments and our elected officials. The areas highlighted in this report are by no means exhaustive, representing only some of the new or significant ways in which we are collaborating and involving the community in our schools and the schools in the community. Just very quickly, the governance issues that we've highlighted are to review the policy, it hasn't been reviewed since 2008, just as an effort to make sure that it is describing the outcomes that the Board of Education is interested in achieving. And to explore ways to improve satisfaction with community leaders, as the Harris survey has shown, there's been a sort of a consistent level of satisfaction. It's an area that is the, or dissatisfaction, depending on how you look at it. It's an area that is a little bit overall, has improved with the last administration of the survey, but there are some components of it that are still a concern.
Can, may I ask you a question, can I interrupt? How many people do we hear from in that category?
In that category, I'm trying to remember the survey results now because it's been a few years now, but, because this report has, was not, this is the first time that we've done this report since those results came in. I want to say we administer it to about 400 community leaders and the response rate is about 25%.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So it's, you know, and the majority of that 400 are the RTM members, because it's the biggest group, obviously. The management issues that we've identified are removing potential barriers to parental involvement and this is largely will be led or is led by the schools themselves as well as the work that we're going to be doing in the Achievement Gap Committee. And then translations, again, this is led by the ESL department. We had the issue with, we were sort of moving ahead that way this year and we lost the grant funding, so now we're regrouping on how best to address not only providing translations written in oral, but also the criteria, the minimum expectations for the level of translations that we, that we do in the district. So again, that's the ESL department working closely with the deputy superintendent and myself in communications. And I'm just going to also note that while I'm in charge of compiling and presenting this report, most of the credit for the collaborative efforts recounted here must be given to the district and the schools, the school leaders, the teachers and the members of the staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions or try to.
Debbie?
I have one question about the areas where we have some concern that came out of the Harris survey. And is there a mechanism for doing follow-up, more in-depth looks at those particular areas with those particular groups, perhaps after the next survey is done because we may see some movement anyway, but then if it still exists going into a third iteration, that we do want to drill down a little bit and get more information?
Well, absolutely. And those mechanisms consist of many different options. What we do after we submit, the Harris survey is a very, very sort of high-level survey. It tries to touch upon a lot of different areas. It's not meant to, it actually creates more questions than it does answers. It red flags areas and then we have to prioritize areas that we do want to follow up with. So we really have, in the reports after the overall Harris survey, each time it's administered, we do identify those big areas that we want to focus on. So the one most closely related to this particular report would be involvement in decision-making and that sort of thing. So we do then, you know, follow up with those things. There are things that we have done since this survey, the 2012 survey, that I think will definitely impact the next survey, assuming, because people have, are thinking most recently, assuming we continue along these lines. We've involved the community in quite a bit of the decision-making this past year, so I would hope that that would, would impact, assuming we continue to do that, that would impact the survey. In terms of the individual things, the reason why there's a governance issue specifically listed here is to say, let's follow up. And that could be a series of, that could be focus groups, that could be a mini survey, that could be anything that you, that you want it to be. it to be.
Are we doing a survey in 2014? We were not, right?
No, we're not. No, we're postponing it.
Have we decided that we postpone to 2015, or is it just?
It is in the budget, that, it is budgeted for, for 2015.
2015. And, and one last question. Every time we go through these surveys, we identify areas that are ambiguous, are, do we do re-edits of the survey to have more precise answers?
We don't have that opportunity.
We don't?
No, it's standardized. In order to have the benchmarking available and the longitudinal, it has to be the same. I mean, the Harris survey does, Harris Interactive does edit slightly periodically, as, but it's the, the survey that they administer nationally.
Right. Peter?
I guess in this off-year, do we want to take advantage of whatever the tool is that allows unique responses, and maybe go ahead and do our own survey on some of the question areas?
You can, absolutely. We just have to identify which those are and how we want to develop that.
Yeah, let me, if I might just, we, less is more, we're trying to get to less is more. So one of the very definite reasons, and the board should talk about it, it's an interesting idea, Peter, but board should talk about it, is what we're trying to do, the reason we took Harris off this spring is to give room for us back, and the great feeling that we just got to find ways where we can pull some things back. And so added surveys in place, if it doesn't add weight around us trying to get things done, would be fine. I just want us to be a little cautious, so.
If we're talking about the specific community leaders group, and you want to explore a little bit more about what areas they have concerns with, I mean, a survey may not be the right, a focus group might be a better option for exploring that.
Let's manage more.
I think this report shows how privileged we are to have such a dedicated cadre of parent volunteers and community organizations, and what the Boys and Girls Club did for us last week is a case in point. And this is just a comment, I know it's not an exhaustive list, but in the next report, I would love to see reading champions included in this, because that does tie in with early literacy, and I want to give a shout out to, I think it's managed by United Way now, but it was originally a Greenwich Alliance-funded grant. Joan Lowe brought it to them. So I just think, things of that nature, we want to highlight where we can.
In, I think we commissioned a review, and this is one that always falls between the cracks of the financial report and community involvement in schools, so I don't, I'll ask it now. We asked for a review of the procedure on gifting and gift cap, and I don't recall that I ever heard an outcome on that. Ken, is that, I guess one question, is it complete, or was there a proposal? And the second part is, when will we, when could we get it?
Ben and I have talked about this, so go ahead, Ben.
We have not forgotten about the request. We, I've been working with the PTAC Council on, on the issue, we've been looking at the data, talking to some other stakeholders. We're probably a month away of issuing the administration's recommendation for any adjustment to the gift cap. But with everything else on our plate, it is unfortunately one of those projects that keep out, push to the back burner, but we have, we have not forgotten about it.
Good, thanks.
I have a few questions, and I don't expect you to be able to answer them, but first I'd like to say I'm really glad that we are looking at translations. And these are the questions I'm going to ask that I don't expect you to answer, but what is the capacity we have now in terms of translators and translator hours, and where is it they spend their time? Are they in the schools, or are they here at Havmeyer translating documents? The other thing that I would want to know is who, what is the criteria for deciding what gets translated or not? I know two years ago, there was supposed to be, there was a list being developed of things that would definitely be translated, and so that would be just standardized. And then the schools would then choose if they were going to do anything else. And that's important, because you would want them centrally translated, A, for consistency, and B, so those schools that need the translation would not be using their building monies for stuff, since those are the schools who have limited finances. The other thing, the reason I harp on this translation, because I see a direct correlation between translation, obviously, is communication with parents, and communication with those parents that are deeply involved with the achievement gap issues. And so achievement gap and communication and translation, in my mind, all go together. If you can't speak and communicate with the parents, then there's no way we're going to get them involved in the schools, because they want to be involved in the schools, but they're not going to walk into a building where no one speaks their language. So I think it's very important. And I think we should probably begin to create a list of those activities where a translator will be required. I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe there was a technology workshop for Hamilton Avenue parents this year that did not have a translator present. And so I asked, so, and someone said, well, there wasn't an issue, because there weren't any Spanish parents there. So my next question was, did a flyer go home in Spanish so that parents knew that this was something open to them? So it's a really, really important issue that we standardize, what it is we translate, how available we have translators in the buildings, and be consistent. And I think we ought to then also go to the website. If the website is going to be the vehicle for a lot of communication to parents, that's something that has to have the option of being translated. So, anyway, those are my comments and my questions, and it may be at some point, get back to me some answers.
Of course, we couldn't agree more, and that's exactly the, that's exactly the work that we are endeavoring to address in the management issue that we've outlined here, and we will report back to you.
Agnes.
I also wanted to add a little bit on the translation thing. One is, is you guys have an amazing translator, and, and, but it's not being used effectively as you could, and I don't know whether we just don't have the technology. But to have the person in the back, and I saw it in all of the, the public forums for FER, and when we had the two Spanish forums in Spanish, we realized these parents didn't even know what racial balance was, and yet we've been talking about it for months with a translator. And what happens is if she's in the back with parents here and there, and she's trying to have him here and that one there, we should just get head phones, as simple as that.
We do have that.
But they never work?
Yes, I agree.
They never work?
They don't, you're right.
Okay.
But I mean, they don't work, the parents don't seem to respond as well. They like it better when they have the direct translation, is what I've been told.
And do English, and then do Spanish?
But, you know, whatever, but I just think that to have them and not be able to use them. But my, my other thing to Bill is, when we study achievement, I am sure parent involvement is going to come up as a key thing. And I would hope that when we do that study, we look at translation as part of, of that involvement, because it's very expensive, it's very time-consuming. We do a lot, a lot. It's impressive, the number of documents we translate. I have no idea of knowing, are we translating the ones that we need to translate? Should we need, spend more resources on more people, so a parent can go talk to the teacher with a translator? Or do we have them in an office translating documents? So I really hope we look into that.
I mean, there's what, in the management side of this report, Kim has flagged that we need to step back and look at the translation needs. Certainly, in terms of the achievement gap analysis, with that work, we can look at, look at it. I am most concerned with understanding, getting some perspective on this, given we are relatively new with the proportion of Latino families we have, as Spanish is the first native language, not fully bilingual yet. I mean, we're relatively new to that as a district. Other districts we can learn from, and so I think we have to understand that.
Just my own experience with translating, I did the app website 15 years ago in Spanish, and I outsourced it to someone, and it was relatively inexpensive, it was efficient, they got the whole thing done, I think within a couple of weeks. It just, it just worked well, and it's the only part of the website, I don't know if it's still up there, that's in Spanish. Probably not the most relevant one, but it, but it's there for those that want to, and I, I think it's, we're remiss in not having all the information that's available to English speakers, to our Spanish speakers, if we're going to increase achievement. So, anyway, but I'm glad we've made a huge step forward, because we're at least talking about it. Okay, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one more question that, because at the beginning of your conversation, in the preamble, you mentioned that there are three different reports that all cater to this particular issue of parent involvement and volunteers in the schools. Does it make sense at some point to have one aggregate report that pulls in each of those, so that the overlaps are more visible, without it creating an excessive amount of work? So, I'm not sure which way is better, one report, they're all in it, or the same process we have with the three separate reports, and then at some point we combine them?
You know, it's, it's, I guess it's at your discretion, the reporting process is based on the policies, and the policies are, separate these areas, so that's why it's reported that way.
I mean, one thing I would urge, with the three new board members, it's a new board, and I think, I think thinking about it, and you see it in these seven, eight reports that we submitted to you, there's a lot of redundancy across the reports. Some said, well, if you put redundancy within, we tried to fix that, but the redundancy across is what concerns me. So I think the board should grapple with that. And in some places, we need the redundancy. We got to come back to key issues several times from different vantage points, but I would urge us to look at that.
I would like to suggest to whoever is the next Policy Governance Chair, to, you guys identified, flagged some of the things in the E-040 and here in the E-080, that we look at that, the Policy Governance Committee, whenever it's formed and convened, because there's some things that, I do agree with Debbie, we should have all of communications together, even though it's three different policies. For that, it may, it may make more sense. And then E-040, I mean, I thought they did a great job, I don't know who wrote that one, but it was like, a Herculean effort, and I think by revising the policy, we could definitely make life much easier for you guys and us.
Okay, you're welcome.
The next report is the first reading of E-050, Human Resources. Dr. Lefkowitz.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm joined by my two colleagues here, who some of you may not know. Gina Williams is the Assistant Director of Human Resources, and Marge Clark, who is a teacher, by the way, in the World Language Department of Greenwich High School, is our personnel specialist. And I think literally every teacher hired in the district goes through Marge's office, and Marge also knows the assignment of literally every teacher in the district. And she's also an expert on scheduling, so when we come to you and ask for a three-tenths teacher, it's been cleared by Marge.
I've gone to Marge many a time, saying, oh my God, what do I do with these pieces? And she's always had a creative solution, so yes, she's an expert.
I thought I would address three specific areas of the HR functions tonight, and then address one big one, but just to give you an overview of some of the functions that we have, and three of the biggest that we have, of course, number one, hiring of staff. And I could just turn the microphone over to Marge to do that, but essentially, our biggest hiring period, of course, is in the springtime, and we hire traditionally anywhere from about 80 teachers to 100 teachers a year. But the hiring doesn't stop only in the spring and the summer. We hire about 20 to 25 teachers during the year for leave replacements, and those are teachers going on maternity leave, illness, and so on. And we also provide oversight of the process for the hiring of administrators. That is, we create the committees, the interview committees, we set up the process for that, we check all references, and we provide all that information ultimately to the superintendent who does the final, the final interviews. And for classified staff, and that is the specialization, I guess, although we do overlap in our responsibilities, I tend to deal mostly with the certified staff, and Gina with the classified. We work in cooperation with the town, so that when we hire, we hire directly teachers and administrators. The town hires administrative assistants, custodians, professional assistants.
Nurses.
Sorry.
Nurses.
Nurses, thank you. And although we are responsible for supervising all of them. So that's the first major area. The second major area, of course, is the supervision of staff. And again, we oversee the evaluation process, which I will get to in a moment. And we are also involved in developing support plans for teachers and administrators who may be facing difficulty. And third, which is a good part of our time, we work cooperatively with the associations in resolving employment issues. And we're proud to say, we'll see this later on in the year, in a report that we issued to you, that in the past year, remember this report is for 2012, we had no grievances from the Teachers Association or the Administrators Association. The only grievance was actually filed against the town, which had to do with the medical plan. Some of our major accomplishments for last year had to do with improving the hiring process, so that we speeded it up, we do a much more thorough check on references, and the superintendent reviews recommendations within 48 hours, contracts are issued within 24 hours. And as a result, we, I think we've done much better in terms of getting the candidates that we, we wanted to. Another very major accomplishment, and I give full credit to Marge for this, and to the Board of Education providing the funds for, for computerizing the evaluation system. We took all of our evaluations, put them into a new computerized system, and as a result, we were a full year ahead of most school districts, who are now required to do this in the seed process. And as a result, our teachers and our administrators are fully prepared for the seed process. But one of the things that Marge had to do is to take, I think it's 26 or more, we've lost count, different forms and processes, and put them into the Talented format. And as a result, and we'll talk about it in a few minutes, we now have electronic access to all of the evaluations that are done in the, in the school districts. We also have improved our intra-departmental communication. We have seven members of our department, and one of the problems that we discovered two years ago was that there were break towns in that communication, where one member of the department didn't have access to the full information of other members of the department. And so we, we meet twice a week, and everybody has access to all the information. We try to prevent information from falling between the cracks. And I think very successfully, we also have improved our communication with the town HR department. And I think that's a combination of the new HR director at the town level, Mary Peffey, there's some also structural organizational changes. We meet now with the town department on a weekly basis, excuse, on a monthly basis. Gina's involved with some regular meetings at that level. We have a BETHR committee that we serve with as well. So many of the issues that existed in the past are no longer issues. We work as an employee benefits manager at the town level, workers' compensation coordinator, and, and so on. And probably the biggest accomplishment also this past year was the advocacy for a new HR system town-wide. And people swore they would never move from the MUNIS system, which is a terrible system, but they did. And so we're now the beneficiaries of that. This is the year of implementation going into next year, and we're very much in the forefront with the leadership of that. We're certainly the largest department involved in that, and we're on the steering committee, fortunately. I do want to address the, this term has been used several times tonight, the 800-pound gorilla. So the 800-pound gorilla in the, the report is the, what we discovered with the evaluation system. Now that it's computerized, we get a lot of information that we had access to, but it was very, very slow in deriving. What we discovered in looking at all of the evaluations that were done with our teachers were both things that we expected and things that we didn't expect. What we expected to find in looking at our evaluations of our probationary teachers and our tenure teachers, was we expected to see that our tenure teachers would have stronger evaluations than our probationary teachers, more experience, they've been evaluated in the past. They've been evaluated in the past, and they have more professional development. And in fact, that was true. For our probationary teachers, eight percent of all the indicators were exemplary. For our tenured teachers, it was twenty-one percent. And for our probationary teachers, thirty-nine percent exceeded expectations, and forty-eight percent of our tenured teachers exceeded expectations. So far, so good. What we didn't expect to find, however, was that no teachers were rated unsatisfactory. So, we were patting ourselves on the back. We broke out the champagne. What a great job we're doing. We're hiring spectacular teachers. And I do believe we, we do hire spectacular teachers. But clearly, something is wrong. The good news is that we, we do work with teachers who are having difficulties. And in fact, and this is a mixed blessing, I guess, are we happy that we have teachers who we separate from employment? No, we're not happy about that, but we do. The fact of the matter is that every year, we have some teachers who are asked to leave the district within ninety days. And we also have teachers who are asked to leave the district during their probationary period. And we even have some teachers who we separate from the district who are tenured. So, why aren't they here? Why don't they have unsatisfactory evaluations? Or why aren't they below expectations? The fact of the matter is that we work with the Teachers Association and the teachers to have these folks resign before they are evaluated at the end of the year. It is foolish for a teacher to not resign and face termination or face non-renewal rather than to go through this process. Because, in fact, when they seek further employment, they have to report the fact that they have been non-renewed or have gone through a termination process. So, what we do with the association is we counsel those people to leave the district, and they leave under better terms and better conditions than they would had they gone through the entire process until the end of the school year. So, I guess it's good news that you know that we do have non-renewals. And you'll find out the numbers of them in the spring when we issue our, our second report. But the interesting, it doesn't change the interesting issues about this, and we could spend an hour talking about the whole issue of evaluation and what the purpose of the evaluation tool is. Is the evaluation tool, the TEPL tool, in evaluation, or is it for professional learning? And we call it TEPL, Teacher Evaluation Professional Learning. The reality is that when a supervisor goes into a classroom now with the TEPL instrument, he or she is looking at thirteen different attributes in the classroom in a forty-minute period. And at best, that teacher is being observed three times during the school year. That's three classes out of nine hundred that a teacher teaches. So, is the tool being used for professional development, or is it being used as a rating tool? And you could argue both sides of that coin. The reality is that there are too many areas to rate. And that's not Greenwich, a Greenwich issue. That is now a statewide issue for the state of Connecticut, and it's actually the issue for these evaluations and rubrics throughout the country. So, the first problem is that there are too many, in my opinion, there are too many areas to rate. Secondly, there are too few observations. Third, most contracts, teacher contracts, have announced observations that are formal observations as opposed to unannounced. We do have unannounced observations, by the way. They're just not formal observations. And the focus really should be on improvement and not on ratings. And the same thing is true, by the way, in industry. You all saw the, the article that I, I think Dr. McCursie sent to you. I just came across an article that was in Teacher Education Week, and the article says, one of the really challenging aspects of the push for new teacher evaluation is that there's no empirical figure in the research literature about just how many teachers, on average, should be dismissed for incompetence or put on improvement plans. If ninety-nine percent of teachers rated effective is too many, as most officials agree, and if sixty percent is too few, where does that leave us? The Teachers Union in Syracuse is going to court because seven percent of the teachers were judged to be less than satisfactory. The question is, do we want our evaluation system to be used as a professional development tool, or do we want it to be used as a rating tool? Not that we have much choice.
Sort of this question. I mean, and the valuation number and all that has been decided by the state. So, as much as we, I mean, this is, this is one of these questions, Socrates probably has been discussing, what is a good teacher? So, we've got to do what the state does. They, they list a number of observations. We do them. The union says that some of them have to be announced, some of them don't have to be announced. But I think, in many cases, we do know who the good ones are, and, and those that, that aren't up to, up to standards. It's just a matter of, of being able to put that up on paper.
I agree with you. I, I think in almost all cases, we know who the good teachers are, and we know who the weaker teachers are. The problem is how you deal with that, and whether simply rating a teacher is sufficient, or whether in fact, you want to focus on those areas where teachers can improve, as opposed to going in with a checklist and checking off these thirteen.
But our system is that, though. It's, it's part professional development, and it's part evaluation. So, it's, it's a balanced thing. We try, and we can't dismiss anybody until we've put them on a, on a support plan.
Well, and that's the other point that I didn't mention. We do put teachers on support plans. And again, we put them on support plans even though the data doesn't show teachers being rated as unsatisfactory or below expectations.
I just have one question, Angela. How many teachers resigned last year?
I don't have the data in front of me. I've got no, Marge, if you, if you know the number.
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight.
But, but were they all?
Which is pretty, pretty typical, a number.
And what?
No, no, not percent.
But that seven or eight is one percent.
Less than one percent.
Yeah. Okay. We have a three percent rate.
However, that's seven or, that's probably seven or eight percent out of probationary teachers.
Okay.
And that number of probationary teachers is about two-hundred-and-fifty. So, it's about three percent, maybe.
I'm sorry, Angela.
I have a question, Bob. With SEED and the new state regulations, from a legal perspective, does it matter when we are making a decision to ask a teacher, when we're counseling out a teacher, does she have more legal protection if she's never been rated unsatisfactorily? Or is it enough for us to say, look, you've been on probation for three years or whatever? And the reason I ask is because if the end result is that we're getting the right teachers identified, we're giving them the probationary period, the support that they, we think they need, and then at the end of a whatever period, we are able, we're making the right decisions, then it doesn't really matter whether unsatisfactory is being checked off or not. But my question is, if I'm a teacher and I want to fight this in court, you know, because I just want to know, is this a serious thing or not?
I think a teacher during the probationary period, the superintendent has a fair amount of leeway. The decision can't be arbitrary. You know, the legal terms are arbitrary and capricious. So, the, the courts, to my knowledge, will not force a superintendent or a, or a school, well, in this case in Connecticut, a superintendent, to give tenure to a teacher unless there's some gross violation. So, they're not going to split hairs about the evaluation. It'd obviously be very poor practice if a teacher's going long for three, three and a half years with a fine record, and then suddenly, based on a teaching practice, is rated unsatisfactory. So, the superintendent has a lot of leeway during the probationary period.
Jennifer.
I have two questions on what we're transitioning into for SEED. SLOs are really important, the student learning objectives. And I'd like to know, in the regular classrooms, do you see that teachers will be looking out for advanced learner objectives instead of focusing on what's the most common, let's say, of the student learning objectives that they could implement? I want to make sure that we're
Here's our SEED expert. Ellen.
Ellen.
Hi. According to the requirements for SEED from the state, the, when a teacher writes a slow student learning objective, it must represent and impact a large portion, and I'm not kidding, that's the phrase, large portion. So, they are, if they're going to write, they cannot write a slow for two, three students.
I wanted to ask, not immediately, and Ellen, I'm sorry, I don't know who to address this to, I'm addressing it to all. Not immediately, obviously, but let's say three years from now, will there be a portion of SEED that addresses digital learning effectiveness as a teacher? Since that's the direction the district is going in, I would think we would need new attributes. And I'm curious what your thinking is.
Right. What, our TEPL program, and that's what we're using as our rubric right now, has technology weaved into almost every component of it already. However, what we do is, as a TEPL committee, which is a standing committee every year, we look at each of the indicators and see what needs to be revised, what needs to be updated. Since we've implemented SEED, excuse me, TEPL, we've actually revised and overhauled the language to make it more rigorous in certain areas and clarify it in at least four or five indicators that I can remember.
Bob, I have a couple of questions. Remind me again, our, our evaluation, we have five tiers? We have, what are they there? Unsatisfactory.
Unsatisfactory, below expectations, meets expectations, exceeds expectations, and exemplary.
Okay. And if I heard you right, how many people do we have that are below? What's the percentage of people we have that are generally below expectations but not unsatisfactory?
You mean as an overall rating?
Yeah, just a percentage.
None. We have, we have
Well, I understood you had said none that are unsatisfactory.
Right.
That, that's a, you're really not cutting it. But then there's one that says, you're not at expectations, but you, you need to improve. There's a rating above that. How many percentages do we have at that? So, we have none in the bottom two tiers?
Well, we have none in the bottom tier in any, in any attribute. No, no, I'm just explaining the difference. We have, so we have nobody rated unsatisfactory nor unsatisfactory in any of the thirteen attributes, teaching attributes.
Okay, okay.
As opposed to the next to bottom category, which is
Below expectations.
Low expectations, where we have teachers who are rated as below satisfactory in specific categories.
Do we have any that have a whole rating?
No.
Okay. And what do you think is the, an appropriate distribution percentage that we should have?
Don't know.
Oh, good Lord.
I don't know. What would it be in, in, in industry?
You, it depends on the HR strategy. You most certainly would not have your entire population at meets or above. You most certainly would not have half your people above meeting expectation. What it means is, and I, this is a bigger question that I won't try to solve here, it means there's something either really wrong in your evaluation, or there's something really wrong with your standards. And I don't know which it is, but I
Typically, ten percent are at the top.
Well, yeah, and you probably have ten to twenty at the top, and, you know, you should have a, I mean, it's a distribution. So, now, by the way, you don't grade to a curve.
Right.
But at the same time, that's a big indicator that there's something really not right in the evaluation system. So, and I appreciate the fact that you called out that it's the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room. I, I, I don't know what the numbers are, but there's something, I, I don't know, there's something really wrong with that system. The, the, you made a comment that you said thirteen items and three observations was, I guess, not enough observations and too many items was what I think you were indicating?
Mm-hmm.
And what, what, can you elaborate? That catches my attention. Because most certainly, you have to evaluate people in any decent HR system on many attributes. I mean, employees I rate in, in my world, we have five big areas, and I probably rate thirty attributes. And, you know, this is the, the standard for HR systems, so, but, you know, I realize we're in a different world here, so, but I, I wasn't, wasn't sure what you were really saying, and I didn't want to jump to a conclusion.
Well, here, the, the areas are found on page twenty-five in the report. It's planning and assessment, student work, reflection, learning outcomes, content organization, delivery, questioning, feedback, engagement, discussion, group work, differentiation, thinking and problem solving, efficiency and procedures, and classroom management.
So, let me just ask one other question. When someone fills out, and I have to go look at the TEPL thing, I guess is what we're using, for each one of those, are there four or five indicators underneath that get to a score? Okay, so you're saying thirteen categories is too many. Okay, I understand that.
But they're not rated on each individual indicator under it. They're rated on the one indicator. So, thirteen ratings, not one for each underneath it.
And you have thirteen, excuse me, I just want to clarify, and you have to rate the teacher on all thirteen of them on each evaluation?
No.
Right, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me just, I mean, we, this is an important context moment. As education has gone into much more codified evaluation, the reason we sent the Peter Capelli piece around, and Peter's Professor at Wharton, smart guy, very informed, is he found, as industry has gone into more codified types of evaluation approaches, as SEED does, and most evaluation systems, United States of America does, you're going opposite of what best practice in industry would suggest. So, the problem, granted, we are not alone in this.
No, no, I
And the SEED issue, I would say, is much from a legal standpoint, is if we are going to do well by our staff to help them be excellent, and for those who need to have the conversation about transition out, we are now in a situation where we have made the evaluation system statewide so bulky and heavy that it's making it that much more difficult to have those conversations. So, we can't abandon it, we can't run away from it. But let's just be clear, this is not just our problem. So, we need to figure out a way to maximize this to, to the best place possible.
Well, and I'd also like to point out what the problem is, and you, you sort of just touched on it. A administrator goes into a teacher's room and observes a lesson, and it's a whole class lesson. It's the most expedient way of getting information across to the kids. And one of the areas here is differentiation. Principal or assistant principal doesn't see it in that lesson. Teacher may be somebody who does differentiate lessons, but it's not seen in that one lesson out of nine hundred lessons. Now, does a principal put down unsatisfactory, below expectations? And does that become a part of a final evaluation? That's why I think administrators are hesitant to put in final evaluations, based on so few observations, a negative evaluation like that. Now, usually what happens, I think, I'm not in business, is that business evaluations are a part of an ongoing dialogue with the employee. I'm guessing, and I don't want to put words into your mouth.
No. It, it, the, the thing that stymies me in the whole thing is And I, I have learned quite painfully, sitting across the table, you know, you want to learn something new in life, come learn how to negotiate a public sector labor contract. That's like a whole parallel universe that, you know, so, and I appreciate that. And I, I don't like it, but I accept that it's the world that we live in, right? So, but what, what, I don't think these things need to be confining. I'm suggesting that even operating within those parameters, and I think Bill has said this in the, you know, kind of the article he sent implied it, and so on and so forth, is that we're not restricted from applying best practices from other domains. And, you know, I, I'll just give you an example. The principal is the person's manager, to use a business context. You know, they have the formal evaluations, but I know darn well that even our
You know, they have the formal evaluations, but I know darn well that even our best principal, you know, our best principals, they know a lot more about what teachers do and what they don't. And to your point, that was one of 13 things, right? And if they don't know that this one 13, they're doing these nine things great, and this one's actually a soft spot, I think they actually do know, and I think they could probably fairly evaluate that. If not, then I'm more worried about the evaluation system. The second point I wanted to make, which is, which I'll end on, is it troubles me when we pose it as an evaluation or a development. Those two things go together. One is so that we can figure out where, do we all agree this is where the person is? And then absolutely, that's used on the flip side to, how do I get you on an individual differentiated program for each teacher to improve their performance? I get a little troubled with these things when they're juxtaposed as these extremes, and it catches my attention.
Adriana.
I mean, it's 10 o'clock, so I just want to, how much of this can we change and not change? Because if we can't change it, I don't think we need to spend too much time on it.
It's not so much an issue of changing as much as understanding why it is the way it is.
Well, because if you, you know, if you have 13 rubrics, which I think it's a lot, but let's say you determine that that's what you need, these visits are announced, I don't understand why the teacher cannot be showing you all 13 rubrics if she knows you're coming to visit her, because you want to, you know, or, and not, maybe not, you know, like personalization or differentiation. She's going to be seen three times. If it's not a surprise visit, then why aren't we just more effective at planning? So that the supervisor can see, okay, yes, she knows how to differentiate, so that if she's given the opportunity to do it and doesn't do it, then yes, I can give her an unsatisfactory.
Well, first of all, the observations, the formal observations that are done, and the evaluation that's given to a teacher, they're not intuitively written. They have to be supported by evidence.
Sure, sure.
So, you can't, you can't possibly cover all of these areas that are identified here on page 25.
In three, you, well, then, why do we have 13?
Three, by the way, is the maximum. We have, we have some teachers who are evaluating on one observation.
Bob, what's confusing to me is if we know the problem, why can't we fix it?
I don't think it's going to be fixed statewide on the basis of what the state is requiring for evaluations. That's all, that's my point.
Then I go back to my original point. If we can't change it, why are we spending so much time on it?
I think it's the implementation of what it is that we're supposed to be doing. I mean, it's informal evaluations, you can walk in that classroom anytime you want, 15 minutes or whatever. You can pick up a lot when you walk into a classroom. You can off a lot. And I think we know the people, most of them, that need help, and I see maybe a failure in our part not to do a better job of, A, making them better teachers, or B, counseling them out sooner. I think it's in the implementation. I don't think we should be making excuses, because it's a state, we're faced with the state regulation, and we ought to just do it to the best of our ability, and make sure we're doing it to the best of our ability, and make, so that we, so that we have a realistic result in terms of the number of people who are below satisfactory and so on. So, I think we just gonna have to, excuse the expression, suck it up and do it.
Well, I, again, I think we're talking about two different things. We had approximately a dozen teachers last year on support plans.
Yeah.
We had teachers who were terminated, for want of a better expression, from the school district. That is different from the data that you're looking at. That's the only point I'm making.
But Bob, if I'm a teacher, and then somebody tells me I'm meeting expectations, but by the way, here's your probationary, or, I mean, your, your plan, whatever is your supportive plan, I'm going to be very confused. Because if I'm meeting expectations, or I'm just one below, why am I getting this plan which threatens my security? So I just think we need to be consistent.
Oh, I think we are consistent. I don't think teachers are confused at all. It's a difference between working cooperatively with a teacher, who understands that they have needs and that they're going to be supported, and what they receive at the end of the year in writing. That's the only difference.
I'd like to move on to another topic, okay? The hiring of Spanish-speaking teachers or bilingual teachers? What do we do to make that happen? I know we made some progress this year, but we're about, we're many, many years beyond, behind where we should be. I mean, this should have been an emphasis, a goal, a long time ago, as our demographics were changing. So what are we doing now? The question is, are we making, what are the efforts we're making to hire bilingual teachers, bilingual support staff? Because again, in my mind, this is linked to student achievement. And when I visited ARCH program, they had moved a community learning program in there, and that particular program had a Spanish-speaking guidance counselor. And Barbara said to me, it's night and day, since we have someone who can talk to these kids, talk to their parents, so and so, them at their PPTs. So again, to me, it's, it's the achievement gap, it's, all these things are connected. So, my question is, what are we doing? What effort are we making? I can go back many, many superintendents ago, when we had an effort to hire minorities at that time, and believe it or not, all of a sudden, we had minorities, because it was, it was a focus. And so I'm just asking, what are we doing now?
Barbara, we're really doing the same thing we've always done, but the, the number of minority teachers and Spanish-speaking teachers out there is limited, and everybody wants them, okay? So, and a lot of minorities would prefer to teach in districts where there are more minority students. So you, you find in districts like Stanford, Norwalk, and Bridgeport, a higher percentage of minority teachers there than you do here. But if you look at us compared to other districts, we do better than others, and we always have, even back when Debbie and I served on the same committee to try to boost this, we, the percentage of minority teachers that we have in the district is higher than most other districts in the state, as opposed to the really high minority districts. So we have a large number, a percentage here. We try to hire, every year we go and we try to hire those teachers. But we also have to go through a process where we want to hire the best and brightest. So you mentioned the guidance counselor at ARCH CLP. He was originally interviewed to be a guidance counselor at Greenwich High School. It was not a good fit. But then, when they realized that he had certain skill set that might work, we rearranged things. Instead of having another social worker, or another half-guidance, half-this, we said, okay, this is a person that could help that program. So even though it didn't fit at Greenwich High School, the original place he was interviewed at, we made an effort to try to see if that would be a good fit, and it has been a good fit. And if you look at our, the highest percentage of Spanish-speaking teachers teach Spanish.
They're not at New Lebanon.
Okay, so, and, and we, and we want that, especially if we can get them to come here, because we want that facility in the language, so that our students are going to excel in that area.
Adriana.
I would phrase the question differently, is, is, because, you know, I mean, you make very good points. Are we exercising best practices in the hiring of minorities, or is there something else we should be doing to get better results? That would be my question.
Well, we, we as a district, and the state, as a, as a state, and districts combined, have tried to lure minority teachers from other parts of the country. If they come here, they really don't stay, to begin with. So it's very hard to get them to relocate, they don't have that group, that family unit, that et cetera, that's going to keep them here. We've had minority teachers that were great teachers, but they couldn't afford to live here. So they moved to Maryland, where they could teach in other districts. So, we, as fast as we can hire them, they also are leaving the district. This year, we hired more minority administrators than we had in a long time. So, it, it, there is a pendulum, we are always trying to do that, but if you go to job fairs and the 20 or so minority faces out there, everybody wants them. So, it's, it's very difficult.
I was just wondering if you ever contact the Hispanic Teachers Association or the Hispanic Administrators Association when we're looking to fill positions? Because they would be a source.
Well, we have various, various contacts, and we even send out mailings to minority organizations in the state. And CREC runs a minority recruitment fair. We used to go to the one in New York City, and that's not a nonexistent anymore. So, you know, we, we go where we can. We, there were times when we went and did minority recruitment fairs in the DC area, but again, we had the problem where nobody wanted to relocate. So, you can find them, they're not very many, and here, we're talking two things. We're talking minority, you know, and we're talking Spanish-speaking. They're, they're not necessarily one and the same.
But, but both work. I think, one issue is the language, but I think another very important issue is the role model. You know, you have, you know, I know our African-American population is small in comparison to, to the Hispanic population, but I still think for some of our students to just know that, that, you know, you can get ahead, that, you know, we have such a low graduation rate, that I think just for the role model, regardless of whether they speak the language or not, is already a good thing. So, so sometimes maybe, you know, I'll take somebody that looks like a minority, even if they don't speak Spanish, because of just the, the effect it does, it has on the kids.
Jennifer.
Could I ask a close-out question, so we can move on?
I, I have something else I wanted to ask. I wanted to talk about non-certified staff. And I was, I know it's the town's responsibility to train the non-certified staff, and I believe their last training was how to deal with difficult people, which is probably a good topic. But I often wonder about if we try, if we, A, ever survey our non-certified staff to see what kind of training they would like, because it seems to me that we would be, we could be more productive if our non-certified staff had good technology skills, or they had the skills they felt they needed to do their job. I also see it as a morale thing, if someone has never asked you, you know, what kind of training you need. I mean, we ask the teachers, we get, let the teachers evaluate, but we would be nowhere without the support staff. I mean, you know, when your administrative assistant is out sick or something, you know, it's almost like the world stops. So, it seems to me that, so the question is, do we ever survey them to see what kind of professional development they have? And do we ever try to improve their technology skills so that everybody else can be more productive?
Actually, Barbara, we, we work very closely with the union leadership of all the non-certified groups to assess just that. So, actually, a couple of years ago, we did just that. We had a day where all of our administrative assistants to the coordinators and to the principals came to the building, and we provided exactly the training that they had asked for. So we do, we do work very closely with the union leadership on those types of issues.
But that was a few years, few years ago. So we haven't done that since.
So, that was two years ago that we did that. I know that they were here in the building yesterday or today, getting some more training on some technology. So, so we do, that's, that's certainly a focus, that we have not lost sight of in any way.
Good, because it's a morale issue, and it's an efficiency issue.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we just have to keep, be cognizant of the time that it takes to gather the people, everybody together, so.
Okay. All right, Debbie.
I have a question about the administrative aspirant program. And I just was wondering if, you know, you had said this year there was not enough interest to run the program, and whether you knew why there was not interest, whether it was a time commitment standpoint, a, that they were involved in other things, a lack of understanding of what the program might be. But was, was there something that could be addressed, or they're just, we've had so many people go through the program that this year there just weren't enough?
Well, I think one of the answers may be that the GEA and the district have supported Mercy College in offering a program within the district in administration. So we have about 30, 35 teachers who have signed up for that program. So they're taking a program that will lead to 30 credits in administration through Mercy College. And I think that's the route that they're following right now, at least starting this year.
Is that offered on-site?
Well, it will be offered on-site. It wasn't offered on-site the first semester, they anticipate it'll be offered on-site in the second semester. If they get the Connecticut State Department of Education's approval for that.
One of the strategies nationwide in addressing the achievement gap is making sure that high-quality, high-rated, highly experienced teachers are in the Title I schools. Do we do an audit of that? Is that normal practice in Greenwich? If it's not, I'm very interested in Dr. Mcursie looking at that and evaluating it and getting back to us.
Adriana.
Yeah, I agree with you. There was actually somewhere, and John Curtin is not here, but I saw a document, that in fact, our younger, less experienced teachers are in our Title I schools on average.
Well, we, yeah, we should come back to that, because actually, we run counter to the national data. Students with the high concentrations we have, typically the average is about two or three years in teacher turnover. We're at about eight, nine-year average in those schools.
No, I'm not comparing the, the-
No, I'm saying, we should, we'll come back to you.
Yeah. Because I'm not interested, New Lebanon compared to the national average, I'm interested in New Lebanon compared to Riverside.
We're not that, it's not that far off. I mean, we're, it's, it's quite comparable. And so I think, we can come back to you on that, but, but it's one of those conundrums in Greenwich, you know, but we, we can come back to that.
I think one explanation is that teachers in Greenwich don't move very often, so they stay put, whereas, say in New York City, if you want to go to school X, you can go to school X, and they bail out of those schools that are more challenging, where, as the teachers in our district don't move, move as much.
Yeah. The substitute days, you know, parents worry a lot about substitutes, and, and, you know, you obviously, you get your kids telling you, oh, we watched the movie, or, you know, everything and anything. And I looked at 12,000 substitute days, but it has no meaning to me, it seems like a huge number, but is that average? Is that what we usually have every year? Is that what most districts get? Can you, like, sort of put it in some reference?
Well, that number includes long-term absences. So that would include maternity leaves, teachers who are out ill for long periods of time for, for, you know, illness. We do have a 97% coverage rate for that. So, I, I would say that's a little on the high side, that we've had years where the total number of days has been 10,000, which is a 20% reduction, or close to a 20% reduction. So I would say it varies from year to year, but that would be pretty typical.
And is there any effort? Because I know some of the, like, the maternity leaves, or at least what I've seen of my kids, you tend to get teachers that, that are well-trained subs, I mean, they do the job, and, and they're ready for three months. The issue is more like the one day, two days. Is that just part of the nature of the beast, or is that something that you can, one can do?
It's part of the nature of the beast, but we do have a good core of regular substitutes in the district, so, who are familiar, we also have building substitutes. So they, each school has their own substitutes, and they are familiar with the school and the program, and the teachers and the routines in that school. So I, actually, I think we do pretty well with our substitute corps. It's not ideal, but, but you're right.
The 12,000 days, is that all illness, sickness, maternity, or is that professional development as well?
Everything. Professional development constitutes about a quarter of the days.
So that's how many teachers, so that would be interesting, how many days? It's always a concern of mine, because the research says that the teacher is out more than 10 days out of that classroom. And when I think about some of the denervation stuff that's coming up, and some of the other things, I worry, could I assert myself? The same teachers being out of the building because they're on a variety of committees. Because you pick the best people, and the other ones are on the committee. But that has a definite impact on achievement and instruction and orderliness. So, that worries me when I see that a lot of professional development is being done during the school day. And I know it's, it's, it's a problem, but sometimes with committee work, it's good to spread it out a little bit.
Well, that, and also reducing the number of multiple teachers who, who go to the same, professional development from the same school.
Right, okay. I just wanted to reiterate what Bob said about the core of substitutes that we have. Since I started hiring the substitutes this year and interviewing them, I have to tell you, they are a very impressive group of people. So, just to, I just want to sure that up for you.
Thank God it's a bad economy, huh?
No, but they are very impressive.
But they can't get a job, so they're really very well.
But they're very enthusiastic, and are really, really, really very well, very good. But they're very enthusiastic and are really, really, really very well, very good.
Also, something that people should know is that when you find a good sub in your building, you tend to hold on to that sub. And everybody says, get Mrs. Snips, she's really good. So, then that person becomes very familiar with the building and the workings of the building and the personalities and so on. They become very much part of that building, so.
Normally, we have to make a motion to extend the meeting, but we don't have time limits on this agenda, so we're okay. That's what I thought. So, so we're a regular little late, so we do not make a motion.
Okay.
But can, I wanted to make a different motion. Can we make a motion to postpone this next item to the next work session on February 6? This item has, it has safe school climate in it, homework. It has a couple of things in here. There's some meaty conversations. I'd hate us to try to jam this through at 10:15 at night.
I'm gay for, I'm gay for it. I just, I just think the rest of our agendas are so jam-packed as it is, but I will ask people what they think. How many people want to postpone this to another? And I can't guarantee when it'll come up until we look at the schedule.
At the 6 that looks...
Well, let's not set a date. Let's just say, all those in favor of postponing this item, raise your hand. Two people, three people. Okay, so, motion doesn't carry. Debbie?
I make a motion to extend the meeting another 30 minutes.
Okay, go move. And not decline it.
Hi. Okay, I'm going to start right away with the board questions then. I think it'll be easier. This is a report that go, that has input from literally every single cabinet member and the director of IT and facilities and safety and security. One of the questions came up about interactive teacher-parent communication on academic progress. We have a great deal of mechanisms already in place for parent-teacher communication about academic progress. Parent-teacher conferences, progress reports, report cards. Parents can always request parent-teacher conferences. Many of our parents email our teachers, some on almost a daily basis. And we have team meetings. We can, you can request at the middle school to meet with your child's entire team. IEP meetings, you know, mandate at least, you know, once a year, that's at least, you know, and those meetings are usually some, in the neighborhood of 60 minutes. The family court, obviously, is being opened for the secondary level at the end of this month. It's already at the high school. And I'm hoping that maybe tonight's board discussion might shed some light on if the expect, the opportunities for enhancing that, that home-school communication. There was another question on, oh, the stretch goals, we already did. And homework, about the differences in elementary school for the amount of homework. In Greenwich, principals are responsible for monitoring the amount of homework that's, that's given, as well as the quality of the homework. And the guidelines are for the, the top end of that. It's not that, that homework must be assigned. There are, there are plenty of classrooms in, in the elementary school level especially that don't assign homework. But they, as, as the report states, we have had a homework committee. The work was put on hiatus for this year, but we will be gearing up. And I actually have a, an appointment with PTAC leadership to discuss possible forums to get the conversation started about homework and what the research shows. And we shared some of our findings with you in the report. Then there was also a question about page six, a quote from page six in the report on Common Core and the phases. That the phases there, like with, with any initiative, anything that you could mention here, digital learning, there's a continuum. There are, there are still teachers and, you know, in the, who don't have a, a phone and, you know, and, you know, are very technologically in the, you know, in the, what? Regress? Okay. And then there are people who are on the cutting edge of things. What we're doing with the Common Core, there are, that awareness stage is certainly, we're well beyond the awareness stage, well beyond that. And we, there are teachers that have really, on their own initiative, really just gone straight ahead with this and gone even past what our district expectations are. So, I'd say there is a continuum there. And certainly, we're moving everybody through those phases as quickly as possible so that it really becomes embedded in their everyday practice.
When do we expect completion? Because I know there's five phases.
I, I think that we'd like to see the majority of our teachers towards the end of that continuum by, I'm going to look, you know...
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
What time?
I know. Anytime.
The phase five, obviously, is the sustaining phase. That's on all of us to sustain the work that we're doing with the Common Core. So, I don't think that phase will ever be done because we're always, we'll always be learning of what's new with Common Core and the instructional practice and obviously what digital learning will be doing for us. So, we'll always be sustaining the program. We're incorporating right now, so, but there will be a drop-dead date, if you will, full implementation, obviously, to support the 15 administration of SBAK. And so, we're, we're currently developing through the curriculum council that we're going to launch soon, a curriculum development guide along with where we are with Common Core implementation. So, you'll have that. So, we can, I can give you more locks, locks, well, drop-dead dates, I suppose, but it is a continuum.
And then I'm open for questions.
One of the biggest concerns that I have is homework. And, and I understand that, that everybody's plates are full, but, you know, this is affecting kids every day. And as Bill knows, it's, it's a great concern. And now, you used to hear it from the parents. Now, we're hearing it from the students at every student government meeting. That's what we're hearing. And, and I have, one of the concerns that I... At student government meetings. Oh, overburdened. There, there's two concerns. One, the amount of home, three. One, the amount of homework, to the quality of the homework. You know, especially the math. They say it's, it's busy work. And three, the inconsistency in between teachers for the same subject. Because, you know, that's, that's unfair. And I worry, you know, we have forums and committees and things. My fear is that homework is one of the, you know, it's probably even worse than the calendar. You're never going to have everybody agreeing. You're going to have the parent that says, no, I want my kid sitting down rather doing homework, even if it's busy work. To me, at least, the fairness side, the consistency should be addressed and sooner rather than later. And the second concern that I have, so that's a general, Bill, I'm very concerned with the AP exceptions to rules. I understand that there should be AP exceptions to the number of hours. It is an AP course. What bothers me to no end is that AP teachers or whoever it's coming from seem to think that they can have a different attendance policy regarding homework. Every student, the attendance policy is very clear in the handbook. If you're sick, the day you come back, you go talk to your teacher, you get your homework. Because if you're sick, you can't be doing homework if you're sick. With AP, that's not the case. If you're sick, you arrive the next day with the homework done. Otherwise, you lose credit. And, and I'm just worried if we have, you know, different people making rules that are outside of our policy.
I've got a question about, there was a survey in your report, an elementary survey, climate survey. Do we do the same thing for middle school and high school?
Yes, it's a, it's a very similar survey. The wording is a little bit different. Ours is based pretty much on the state. This was the first year we did it. Next year, this year, we will use the state surveys because we have to report the information this year. There are surveys for elementary, middle, high school, parents and staff.
Okay, great, great. The other thing in the report, there was a, a chart showing the number of classes in the different schools that are, that are over. There were three of them, like for New Lebanon. So, there was no chart for, for middle school or high schools? We have no classes that are beyond the boundaries?
The, the class size procedure doesn't cover middle schools?
I thought, oh, it's the number of students that each teacher can teach.
Right, it's the course load.
So, you, so then when I hear parents complain that there's 28 kids in an English class, then there's nothing that can be done about it because that's it.
Their, their, their contract states how many students they can have overall.
Right. And, and the board doesn't even, the, the district doesn't even have sort of informal guidelines about how big some classes should be in the school?
We do look at the average class size and we also look at the extremes. So, what's the, like, we review, look at the high school and we say, you know, is there a class that's, why is there a class of nine students? When we look at those, the, the, the high school is very good about dropping the course if it's not, and making exceptions only if it's a, you know, the, the third of a, you know, it's Latin III and they need to have Latin III. We can't, it's just not, you have, but...
But it's the middle school that's...
And then, and the middle school, the principals usually will come to us and say that they're having a schedule difficulty and that they have this inordinately large class and that they need something to mitigate that. So, it's the principals who usually will get right on that and change. I know, yeah, exactly.
Peter?
One, just a general concern. There's such an inconsistency between and among the schools on the level of homework per grade. I know you say it's up to the principal, but maybe there's a best practice here, but I've heard of some schools, no homework, other schools, lots of homework, so something to be addressed.
And, and as I said, that's, that our district practice has been that that's at the, you know, not even necessarily at the, it could be within the same grade level. So, if you're all fourth-grade teachers, you can give no homework and you can give...
Might I suggest a deeper dive into that question?
You know, a deeper dive in that you would like it regulated, that everybody has to give the same amount of homework?
I, I think, I think I'm hearing what I'd like to say, which is, there ought to be some reasonable parameters here. I don't think the answer is zero and I don't think the answer for an elementary student is two hours of homework a night. But something's obviously working in certain schools. We should figure out what that is and make sure that we're consistent across the board in general guidelines.
I'll, I'll say it more directly, directly. This stuff stymies me to death and this is why. This inconsistency across the district, for example, and this is why we've talked about best practice. I'll pick on my school because I'm familiar with it. My daughter's doing a brilliant job advancing and she comes home at night with very grade-appropriate, she's in third grade. It's, she's progressing through the times tables. Homework is effective, it's of high quality. It advances her and builds on the skills that she learned in the classroom. The same with word study, okay? She doesn't have too much homework, shouldn't have it. You know, that's subjective, I'm not an educator. But there, she comes home with something of quality that's reinforcing. Gee, miracle a miracle. North Miami has some of the highest performance in, in the district. What, I don't, I'm not suggesting they are the right best practice, but it blows me away that that's what they're doing there. Bill has quite brilliantly put in this network model and they talk about it in here. Network members learn from each other what regulars relevant, relevant and culturally responsive instructions should look like and sound and feel like. It just, it stymies me that if we know that that works, somebody at central office isn't turning around saying, guess what, guys? This one is a non-votable item. It's, it's a best practice and we're looking for it to be implemented. There's no reason that a kid at North Miami should have a better experience based on best practice than a kid that's sitting in Hamilton Avenue. It just, and I don't know what they're doing at Hamilton Avenue, that isn't my point. It, it just, I don't get why we're not able to look across our system, determine what these best practices are and actually tell people to implement. I don't understand why we're leaving it up to an individual building. It just makes no sense.
Homework is, has been a problem forever. You know, how, how much, how much there is and whatever, but I do, do agree. There should be some homework because practice is power. I, you know, I'll give the example of you've gone to a computer workshop and someone says, oh, this is what you do and blah, and you sit there, you do it and you follow it all. And then you go home and you go, oh, that's not working so well. So, you realize then you haven't learned it. But if you're sitting in a class and everybody's there doing it and you're getting all the help you need, you haven't, you don't know, you haven't learned that until you've done it on your own. And I know, and the other analogy you can make is, where would our varsity sports people be if they didn't practice? Isn't that what it's all about? Practicing, the brain is a, is a muscle as well. So, I think, I know we're never going to come up with the magic number of how much. I mean, there should be a quality control thing, but I do think they should be getting some homework.
I'm sorry, I was, I was, I was on a different, I was on a little different point. My point, my rant is about uncovering best practice and implement. I'm not suggesting, I have no idea, I'm not an educator. You guys are, you know, I, I don't know whether it's a lot or a little. I was just using that as an exemplar. I don't know, maybe five minutes of homework on something else from North Street is the right thing to do. I guess it's the inconsistent application of best practice because I think it should be building independent the education a kid is getting. That's my point.
Yeah, if I might just quickly, I think Ellen, with the homework committee, that immense amount of work, attachment to here, speech to a set of guidelines. I think what I'm hearing here, Ellen, is we can go back, look at where we are on that, figure out some next steps. There's conversations, as Ellen's mentioned, with PTAC. But at least in this area of best practice, the committee did lay out, and it's in the attachment here, a set of minute recommendations in certain areas as you get in all places, then the loose coupling. You may have the policy than what the teachers actually do. You may have the policy, then what teachers would do.
But it's not just the teachers, it's the principal who you say is setting the policy. If the principal says, no homework across the board, it doesn't matter what your policy says.
Well, no, I get that. And everywhere you go, what a central administration says, what a principal does and what a teacher says are going to vary greatly. In the homework area, we've set the stage here through Ellen's work, an attachment to, it's right here, pages 30, not, 38 and 39, excuse me, page 29 and 30. We can, I think, go for and look at that. I've heard clearly the board saying, on this one, I'm sensing a lot of consensus, that how do we have more clarity across schools? And, and what we can look at that, talk about and see how that flows out of the work of the committee. And I think we can come back to the, back to the board after consultation with principals and others on what makes sense.
Sounds great.
Is that, you know, because there's, I mean, there's a lot of work that's been done on this, so I think we can go back and look at that.
Barbara, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
I read the report and it caught my attention. I've learned enough about these reports that usually they're a foreshadowing of some point of view that the administration has. You guys raised the question and had a lot of research in here about, I won't say zero homework, but it seemed to imply a no homework. Is that what the administration is kind of, is that, is that the philosophical thinking that, that is prevailing in the leadership right now or...
The, the, I, I think what's, you know, interesting is that when the committee did the, the research, one of the conundrums we found is that the research is, is, does not tie, you know, there's no correlation between how much homework a child gets and their, their achievement. They, we've, we pointed out some of the flaws, if you will, in some of the research and is what do you consider student achievement? It's, they all base it on standardized test scores, things like that. If you, right, and the, the one thing that seemed pretty clear at the, at the elementary level is that's the level where it is the least effective. That the, the students, you know, other than reading and practicing, reading those types of, of activities, that it, that it isn't effective. It doesn't tie to a student being a better student. There's no, there's no research on the other side that says there's some value? As I said, the value is to those types of practice things, multiplication tables, reading at night, but not, you know, the, the least value is for, I mean, I'm not, you know, making, you know, the, the least value are those long-term projects. Science projects, you know, things that, you know, writing... Um, uh, science projects, um, you know, things that, you know, writing, you know, doing a, reading a book, doing a diorama, something that takes weeks to do. That's usually done.
But I, I, to be very clear, there's, there's, there's no, we, we believe in homework. It's trying to find the right balance and amount of it. So I, I think, I mean, we, yeah, I, I mean, I think the leadership Ellen put forth with the homework committee, it, and I think, Barbara, you said it next to the calendar, next to, this is one of the most debated, complicated issues there is. But we can come back with, based, because it's right here, homework procedure next steps is, it was put on, a lot of work done, set of findings preliminary, then put on hold relative to a set of other work. I think actually it's been a very productive moment in the meeting because there's a lot of unsencing consensus on the board to say, "Now go back and see which of these procedures you can bring forward and how do you get consistency school to school?" And I hear you, Peter, teacher to teacher, principal to principal, but let's go back and look at that, and then we can come back at another date to, to give some clarity, if that makes sense. And I very much heard the AP concern. I heard that very much. Adriana, send the notes here.
Debbie? Yeah, just continuing on that, Ellen, what I, um, when you do go back and whether it's through the high school, um, executive board, the, the student government, through the, your committee, the homework committee, et cetera, but is, again, looking at the, the AP levels as they're college courses, but they're being taught in a high school environment with other demands on their time? And, um, in, with respect to the high school, how are they dividing that recommended two and a half hours? Which teacher is getting it? Because I think my experience was each teacher felt that they were entitled to a full hour of time, which then does not mean you have two and a half hours of homework.
Six hours.
You have six hours of homework. And for those, uh, very advanced students that might be having multiple APs, if you've got six APs that each think two hours of homework a night, it's, it just get, it does get burdensome. So in the appropriate place, look at this. Peter?
I'm not homework.
I'm not homework.
All right. Not homework, and I don't expect you to answer this all tonight, um, but write it all down, because I would like an answer. I get six hours with you? All right.
Ellen, I'm writing.
All right, you ready, Bill? All right. So your, your, your report, uh, says that we're, we're fortunate to have a cadre of instructional coaches. So, uh, what is the number in your cadre? Um, it says we rely heavily on the instructional coaches. So very curious as to the qualifications and special training that make somebody an instructional coach? Are they truly experts in whatever the area is that they're coaching? Wondering how we measure whether they're actually raising achievement if we're going to rely on them so heavily? Who's reviewing them? Who's ultimately responsible for them? Bill, you need me to go? I can send it to you in an email, but we're going to get it out.
We already have this all done.
Where do they reside?
We'll send you last year's thing.
You can update that for me. Um, where do they reside? And if they're moving among buildings, who's tracking their time? Are they logging in in an office? How are we dividing their time amongst the, uh, the buildings and grade levels for that matter?
I, I think.
Get all that, I mean.
Yeah, I do think how we evaluate coaches has been a question we've asked for several years, and, and how do we evaluate their impact? I think it's an important question since there's a, a large number of them. Laura, did you have a?
It's not on homework. I just wanted to acknowledge the point, um, and say the policy governance should indeed take it up. The survey nature of this report, um, that it covers so many, has tentacles into so many other reports, and I did want to acknowledge that.
Right.
And along those lines, reference was made on page one, and I'm trying to keep track of these reports that are due to us at certain points in time. And, and Bob also mentioned it in his report. Um, there's going to be a separate report, um, from TEPEL about the educator quality in Greenwich, which I'm assuming that information will now come from Talon Ed whenever that is ready. And I didn't see it in the agenda plan, and I wasn't sure where it fit in.
Kim, which needs to be scheduled? Or?
It's a reference to seed, I think, here.
Yeah, which hasn't, hasn't been scheduled.
Yeah, we should.
It hasn't been scheduled, um, but that, that, but I don't think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I, I would recommend we fly that as a question of when and how to address that, because we just, a little while ago, spent a lot of time on seed. That shouldn't be the end of the conversation, but I think we need to think about. No, I hear you. Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we just appoint that seed.
Okay, great. I have nothing else to say.
It's on the list to be scheduled, correct?
Adriana?
Yes, it's, it's down on the bottom of the list to be scheduled. Seed update, it says. But that, I think that's different from the evaluations.
Also on the list to be scheduled, the, um, the monitoring of bullying policies and procedures, that's also mentioned that it's going to be due by the end of February, but that's not in our agenda. So is that just like a written report that's going? If you look on page 12, um, on safe climate, uh, at the bottom of page 12, it says that the superintendent established this fall a task force to review bullying policies and procedures. The task force will be submitting a report by the end of February.
Yeah, and it's not scheduled with the board yet, but we are working on that.
That's what I'm saying, that, that, I know it's not me.
It's not even, it's not even on the to be scheduled.
Yeah, no, it's not in our, in our radar screen. And, and tied to that, you know, the safe school climate plan, how is that doing? Are, you know, what's the status on the, the implementation of the plan? What? Oh, okay.
Every school has a safe school climate committee. We had two major events this year. We had I Care Day, and then we had First Responders Day, um, in honor of the two tragic events. The safe school climate committees, um, decided to turn them into positive norm-related activities. Um, you'll see, you'll see the posters in every school. We have, uh, district-wide safe school climate committee meetings three times a year. We have one coming up next week. Um, and part of the committee that, um, Bill is talking about, we're looking at the bullying procedures, which is part of safe school climate. One of the concerns is, like so many things we do, that the paperwork becomes burdensome. So I think part of the work of our committee is to look at how can we streamline the paperwork so that we capture the essence of what we need to do while still making it a time-efficient process.
And how are we doing with the parents? It, you know, the parents have been introduced to the norms and the norms are referenced in the expectations. Because I think if you get the parents to help and reinforce these rules, especially at the elementary level, at home, I think that will also help the school advance, uh, the safe school climate.
Um, schools do have activities they do with their parent organizations, but like so many things, they're individualized. I think you still have your card that you're walking around with. Um, so, different schools do different things. Um, some schools have T-shirts. I think North Street has T-shirts. Um, and they, that's the way they have parents aware of the norms. Um, we've done some training with the community agencies so that places like the Y and the Boys and Girls Club, we give posters to them as well.
Very quickly, I was the liaison to the administrative work group on safe school climate that looked at bullying. And I wrote, I redrafted our policies in this area. It went through the administrative work group. It was approved there. Next step is it comes to PGC, and then it goes to the board. I'm all ready to go. As soon as the PGC meetings are scheduled, I'll bring it in, and I'll spend a lot of time there.
And just to respond to Mrs. Erickson, the, um, educator quality report, that's a separate report, it was a while ago, is Bob's retorter, a few minutes ago.
That was it?
That was it. It was a good one.
Wow, that was right. It's always next year.
Okay. We don't have any more comments. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work on that. You're welcome. Mr. Van Braun?
I'd like to make an overall comment about the structure of the monitoring reports. They're somewhat hard to follow because they do not focus on what are the problems that need to be overcome in order to achieve whatever the monitoring report is supposed to be covering? What are the causes that are holding people back from reaching those, those objectives? And what do we need to do to fix it? That, I think, would be a lot more constructive than just a recitation. It requires an awful lot of work on the part of the people presenting the report.
We, we have not looked at the format for the non-curricular areas, and, and they need to be. So the PGC's got, um, lots of work to do. So we finished our topic. The only thing is agenda planning, and the only thing I want to say about that is that